To call to order the Town and Niskiuna Planning Board and Zoning Commission November 18th, 2024 meeting. Mr. Henry, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Laflamme.
Here.
Ms. Strang.
Here.
Mr. Khan.
Here.
Ms. Belovski.
Here.
Mr. Billen Calhoun.
Here.
Ms. Gold.
Present.
Mr. Millspa.
Here.
Chairman Dorpino.
Here.
We have the October 21st, 2024, meeting minutes that were issued. Could I get a motion?
Move to approve.
Moved by Ms. Belovski.
Second.
Second by Ms. Strang. Any comments or corrections? I had none. Okay. So you know, comments or corrections. Mr. Henry, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Laflamme.
Aye.
Ms. Strang.
Aye.
Mr. Khan.
Aye.
Ms. Belovski.
Aye.
Mr. Billen Calhoun.
Aye.
Ms. Gold.
Aye, I was not present, but I did watch the video.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman Dorpino.
Aye, and the minutes are approved. We have no public hearings today, so we're going to move right to privilege of the floor. Anybody wishing to talk about any planning or zoning matter at the Town of Niskiuna may come up, please state your name and address for the record. We do have a lot of people here, and we do have a full agenda, so we are going to ask to try to stay to a three-minute limit if possible. Privilege of the floor is now open.
Good evening. My name is Judith Calvelli. I live at 2644 Choice Connected E Road and have lived there since 1976. So I think I have a lot to say about what goes on there. When we first moved here, we loved Niskiuna, and we loved living on Choice Connected E Road because we had the lyshakil in our backyard. We had woods. It was it was beautiful. It wasn't even a five-lane road at the time. It was only a four-lane road, so getting out was tough. And I've seen a lot of things happen on Choice Connected E Road in the number of years we've lived there, but it basically hasn't changed. It's still a neighborhood, even though people don't understand that it is a neighborhood. And I've been lucky enough to have the most wonderful neighbors over the time that I've lived there. They've been fabulous people. I've watched their children grow, and they've been kind, and they've been helpful. And I think that people who don't live on Choice Connected E Road, who live in Niskiuna and just drive through it, don't understand that it's a neighborhood. It's a neighborhood, just like the neighborhoods that are not on Choice Connected E Road. And a number of years ago, around 2000, those of us who lived on Troy Road got together, all fifty-some of us, and decided that we did not want Dr. McCarthy to build the two-story office building on Choice Connected E Road. And we fought like hell to have that stopped, and we did, because we wanted to save our neighborhood. And then we had the issue of a Holocaust museum going up on Choice Connected E Road, and we were not happy about that either, because it would mean additional traffic. It would mean people turning off the road quickly onto a very small road to turn onto, and there would be more accidents than there already are. And that didn't happen either. And both of these things were planned by people who don't live on Choice Connected E Road, who don't live in Niskiuna. And now we have this. And believe me, I love Harry's. I bring my car there to have serviced, to have inspections done. I have nothing against it being there, except that it needs to stay the size it is, because to make it any bigger is going to change the way Troy Road looks. And if we all want to drive down Troy Road in the next 10 years and have it look like the Town of Colony and have more traffic and more accidents, then then we change the zoning. But personally, as a person who's lived here for many, many, many years, I think it would be irresponsible to do that. I would be very unhappy if it was done, because it would change my neighborhood drastically, and it would make it very different than the town we know now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jim Joyce. I live on Price Man Drive. I've been going to Harry's Service Center for over 15 years. It's been a great, really great convenience for me, because I can drop my car off and then walk home, and then come back and pick it up. And I can say, over all these years, that the property has always been kept in really nice condition. And I believe that any type of expansion, Harry would handle it appropriately. So I'm in favor of this, and I wanted to support Harry and his expansion plans. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Steve Sina. I live at 1420 Via Del Mar. I had the privilege of moving up here in 2018 from Long Island. And one of the things, one of the many things that I love about Niskiuna is how Niskiuna, as a community, supports local businesses. And when I moved up here from downstate, my dad told me, one of the first things you need to do is find a good mechanic. And I did. And when I met Mr. and Mrs. Kringle, they were warm, they were kind, they were friendly, they provided a great service. And it's been a great place to be reliable, to service the cars of both my wife and my kids. It's interesting, though. You know, it's I've heard a lot of things about traffic. I've heard a lot of things about speeding. I've heard a lot of things about accidents. And it's funny, I find that it's probably the safest part of Route 7, because there's always a cop in the vicinity of Harry's service station. So I find it actually the safest part of Niskiuna. In addition, you know, I can't tell you how many times I've seen people just walk in, "Harry, I need help. I need someone to look at this. I need I need this isn't working." And Harry's team, you know, just responds in an amazing way to service like a good business should, with only two bays, with no place for people to wait. It's absurd that this hasn't been done sooner, the expansion, to make this a place that provides a greater service to the community that is great, that is Niskiuna. I'm in full support of this. I think it'd be foolish to keep it the way it is. I think it would better the community. I think it would better the neighborhood. People talk about traffic. I have people that drive through my neighborhood all the time to get to the co-op. I get it. It's part of what makes our community great, our neighborhoods great. I would love to see the expansion done. It would help to provide a greater service to our community, to our neighborhoods, not just from being able to service more of our great community, but also to provide the amenities, the comforts, that would make it even a greater service. So I'm in full support of this, and I hope it gets approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tom Budka. I live at 2329 Algonquin Road, in the two blocks from Harry's Service Center. And I enthusiastically support his his plans to grow the size of his building. That's all we're talking about here, to wants to grow the size of his building, to have a few more, two more bays to repair cars. We all need cars cars repaired. And I find it extremely convenient to live in the neighborhood, drop off my car to someone I trust, and come back, come back home. It saves me a lot of time. Harry and his mechanics have also made house calls. Who does that? That's awesome. So I find Harry's business, you know, a real asset for, you know, the quality of my life and my neighborhood. And yeah, I'd just like to conclude, strongly feel that we should encourage and not limit small businesses businesses like Harry's Mobile, because he's a neighbor, and he's investing in Niskiuna. And who better to support than a neighbor in a small business? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Joe O'Brien. First of all, excuse my voice. I work at a middle school, and it was Monday. And also, I was yelling at the jets on the TV all yesterday. But in all seriousness, I live at 2370 Algonquin Road, again, two blocks away from Harry's. So I'm not going to pretend I know the legal or the, you know, technical matters at hand. I'm not going to pretend or fake like I know that. All I'll say is that I'm 33 years old. I've spent 20 of those years living on two sides of Route 7. Grew up, I live on Crest, and then when my parents moved after college, they now live in the neighborhood in Question. I'm currently living there over the summer, which is now November, working some things out. Okay. But the point is, the Kingra family has been an incredible part of my life for over 10 years. When I was about 22, I started working there in that little shop, the one that's in Question and is one down on Albany Street. And I know Route 7 from Bly Street from Bly Street to the cross-town connection, like the back of my hand. And yes, it's a community. It's residential. What else do you see when you're driving down there? You see a farm, the farm stand. You see churches of multiple denominations. You see a firehouse. You see a local electricians' union. You see, you know, stuff that Norman Rockwell used to paint paintings of, you know, that made a community a community, because that's what that's what the main objection seems to be here, is that it's going to degrade the community in some way. So he might not have ever painted a painting of a gas station, but he definitely painted cops on a counter with a kid, guys fixing cars, mailmen delivering mail. And if you've ever spent any time at Harry's, like some people have alluded to already, you see that every single day. And yeah, the doctor that wanted to build a two-story building somewhere, he wasn't a neighbor. But guess who is a neighbor in that neighborhood? It's Harry Kingra. I've had dinner at his house. I've met his kids since they were this tall, till they got this tall. In Sue Ball's case, till he got this tall. Okay. And it's just, he's a man that provides a service to the community that you can walk up to. He knows everybody's name. You can walk in. You're not nervous. You're not feeling like you're taken advantage of. You can go and have a cup of coffee. You can shoot the crab with your neighbors. And I get it, you know, it 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 might be inconvenient to a handful of people that all of a sudden, you're 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 you've got a bigger building behind you. But after Paula's passing, Harry's wife, all this man has wanted to do is to create a better life for his children, which everyone, even in opposition or in support, can sympathize with. And it's his land. He has the right to do that. And I know that because I've spent 10 years with this man. When I've been in hard times, when I had to come back home with my tail between my legs, he gave me a job. I helped him out, and I still do. I still have the key to his office, or to his shop, rather, on my key ring, because I know there might be a weekend when one of his workers needs help, and I will be there like that, because I know that he's my neighbor. I know that he's a good man. And if he's not able to just expand a little bit, to build upon that legacy, to build upon that community and that feature of our neighborhood, it's going to go to somebody else, or it's going to sit there like a dilapidated building in an eyesore. And then when someone finally does build it, you're not going to know who owns it. They're not going to know you. They're not going to be they're not going to give a crap about your problems. And so they're just going to be looking at the bottom line. So you want to talk about community, you want to talk about preserving things, do it with a man who lives there, who's done the work, and he just wants to make a better life for his children and make a better life for this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Scott Hicks. I live at 1121 Millington Road, Niskiuna. We've been there 42 years. My first, I'm 82, my first 40 years, I moved 35 times in different places in the country. I've been in a lot of places, and I've had been serviced by a lot of people in terms of automobiles. But I want to tell you a little story about Harry. I had a heart attack 28 years ago, almost died in the ambulance, but they revived me. And then about five, six years later, they wanted to do triple bypass. And they did. And so I was in pretty bad shape from the bypass. And I tried to get back to the gym, because it's absolutely essential for me to continue a routine of exercise and workout. And this guy comes in next to me one time, and he he asked me, "Are you okay?" I must have looked pretty bad. I said, "I'm okay." "Are you pushing yourself too much?" I said, "I don't know." He says, "Be careful. Be real careful." Well, that was Harry. He didn't know me from Man in the Moon. And he stayed in the gym for quite some time and worked out himself, and I was there usually in the evenings when he was. He always was solicitous and wanted to know how I was doing. It says something about the man himself, and that's what I want to really emphasize tonight. He's an unusual person. He has very good help. And he has a drive to make sure that what he does is done once, and one doesn't have to come back and forth to get the same work done. I've never seen anybody in his field that was that good at what he does. And I think it would be a terrible loss to Niskiuna if in any sense we made it impossible for him to continue his operation where he is. I don't know if that's the issue or not. I've not talked to him about that. But that would be a terrible thing for this community. If you go by his his business during the day, I mean, I can't believe how many cars he's dealing with in one day. And somehow, he works that down pretty well every day. I don't know how he does it. So Niskiuna would have a lot to lose if we weren't able to attempt to accommodate his needs as a businessman. He's a successful businessman, and he's more than that. He's a very moral person. And I think that counts for something in business as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Brittany Campbell, and I live at 925 Mohegan Road, pretty close to the station. I met Harry at a charity event many years ago, saw him repeatedly at this charity event. And I used to live in Rotterdam, and I used to travel Route 7 to go to my work, which is just after the Niskiuna border, for the last 17 years. Basically, I didn't know he owned the station until one day I was getting gas, and I was like, "Hey, I know you." And he made it a point to say hello every time I went there. And when I realized that he owned the station, I decided that's where I'm going to get my car serviced, because I always want to support somebody who supports the charities I support and who I see out in the community. I just happen to move very close to where Harry's station is, and my husband and I get our cars fixed there. The best part about it is that we drive there, we drop our cars off, we walk back to our home. And when we when he gives us a call that it's ready, we are able to walk back and pick up our cars, have a nice conversation always. I've come to know the service center, and everybody that I've dealt with there has been great to deal with. I know that at one point, he was able to make a land purchase behind the garage to build a home. And I realized that he then found another piece of land or a house that was already built, and he purchased that as well. So knowing that he's also a neighbor in business and at his residence. I know many have cited that there is a concern due to the traffic and accidents along the Route 7 corridor. And I know that the majority of the accidents that have happened in the last couple of years have had some very serious deaths and/or critical health concerns for some of those. And every one that I've been to, so there is, I've been home when they've happened, and I've gone to the end of my street just to see if there's anything that we could do, which most cases there weren't. But both of them have happened from Mohegan West, the ones I've witnessed, and then Pierce Road in East. I will tell you that when I worked, when I walk Route 7, when I go to the service center, I actually walk to Anandaga and Randall to cross, because it's the most visible place that you will find to cross Route 7 anywhere between Bellevue Hospital and Pierce Road. It's the easiest. There's not a curb. I can see both ways. I walk my child across that road. I walked my child across that road when he was born to visit Harry's. We used to walk to the gas station. So I will say that I don't think that's going to be an issue. The other issue about the traffic with the cut-throughs that I know people have mentioned is that when you're going west, the first time you can cut and go through to get to Rosendale is Anandaga. That's not because Harry's gas station is there. That's because it's the first road you get to to go through that neighborhood. So if people are cutting through, it's usually not because of the station. I would venture to guess that more people cut through on Mohegan, which is a straightway from Route 7 to Rosendale Road. And I will tell you that anytime there's an accident or anything on Route 7, Mohegan Road is the one that gets backed up mostly, when they're trying to get through and avoid the traffic. I think the expansion will not only better serve the community, but be more visually and aesthetically pleasing, as there are a lot of cars there, because he's trying to service many cars in two bays. If he has more ability to service the cars, you know, the cars can be parked behind and won't be as, you know, visible to the road. And also, it's been there 75 years. I mean, I know that there's zoning, and I get that, and that's why we're all here. But the reality is, is that a lot has changed in that time. And every, I'm going to guess, and I don't know if this is true, but every person that's living there, the gas station was there first. I do want to mention that I did view the last meeting, and I was a bit concerned that a lot of people, and I know there's a response here, but a lot of people had some personal discussions about the proprietor of the establishment. And they seem very concerned about their neighbors and their neighborhood. But the reality is, is he's their neighbor. That's their neighborhood. He lives there. I would be proud to have him live next to me in my home specifically, because my neighbors don't know their lawn. So I mean, he keeps the nicest home. And I'd be very proud to have him living next to me. I do want to also mention that, you know, I think that we need to support a more diverse and inclusive community. And I feel, and maybe it's just my feeling, is that that might be part of it, and I'm not proud of that. I also wanted to mention that I came here as a direct result of a neighbor coming to my home last year or the year before, I can't remember, and urging me to sign a petition to not allow this to happen. And before I could even say a word, there was negative, you know, everything and reason why not to do this. And I responded to that person and said, "Thank you for letting me know. I'm a customer. I'm going to support him." And that is actually why I went to him the next time I saw him, and I said, "Hey, did you know this is happening, that like people are canvassing?" And
I'm going to ask you to summarize quickly, please.
Okay. And I would just like to say that I don't think neighbors should do that to one another. I think this is a very important thing that we should do and allow for this expansion, and I fully support it.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Deborah LaMontana. I live at 1019 Lampreter Road. I've been a resident of Niskiuna for 46 years. And I believe I've been a customer of Harry's for more than 10 years. I'm not sure exactly how long, my husband included. So I believe this small business owner, Harry, would like to make his business more physically attractive and add just one single bay to his auto repair business. He would he has a, he would have a wooded buffer surrounding all sides of the business, except that open to Route 7, because he owns that land. And he would be making Route 7, in my opinion, more attractive. It seems to me he's being very respectful of the quiet nature of the neighborhood by having this buffer. And he would shield the business from the neighbors by having such. In my personal experience, I have found the business to be quiet, and the entrance-exit traffic to be inconsequential. I do not believe one additional bay will make a huge difference in traffic. And I think the point you just made about the people using that street to get to Rosendale Road is quite a valid one, has nothing to do with the business. Customers are served all day, so it's not like everybody's there at 9:00 a.m. or everybody's there at 5:00 p.m. They're there all day, so there's a constant in and out. We don't have a plethora of businesses here in Niskiuna, and I think it's important to support a small business. We need to encourage a greater tax base, which isn't to say we want a Clifton Park here or a Route 5. None of us want that. But Niskiuna needs to be concerned about the high taxes. It looks like this year, we will probably have about the same tax increase as Saratoga County will have as a decrease. We all want residents to stay in beautiful Niskiuna, to enjoy the many advantages we have, rather than to be persuaded to move to Saratoga County, where the taxes are lower. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tim O'Brien. I live at 2370 Algonquin Road in Niskiuna. I'm here to speak on behalf of the applicant, Harry Service Center. I want to indicate to the board that I'm in support of the proposed upgrade to his building. It appears the primary reason to disallow the application is a regulation that states the operator can only expand the building's current footprint by 10%. The current building was built in 1960 and has operated as a gas station and service center for all those years. It's a very small building. This plus-10 regulation seems arbitrary, dated, and certainly out of step with modern commercial operations. A famous senator from New York, Daniel Patrick Moynihan, once declared, "You're entitled to your own opinion. You're just not entitled to your own facts." I think the parties involved in this process must be sure that they're accurately communicating the facts at all times. I'd like to counter some of the opposition's recent statements. The revised footprint of the building isn't large, as stated by the opposition. The upgrade would extend the building east 25 feet away from the affected neighbors and extend the rear wall backwards roughly 20 feet. The roof line would not change. I struggle to categorize this change as large. Again, an outdated regulation stands in the way of approval. There is no correlation between accidents on Route 7 and this operation. I was able to find six fatal accidents along Route 7 since 2001. Imagine that? And none of them were near the applicant's location, and none can be attributed to the applicant's business. To state otherwise is patently false. People appear to use Anandaga Road to get to Route 7 East rather than going to the applicant's operation for service. Cars use our neighborhood, Anandaga Road specifically, because the sightlines at Mohegan are terrible, and cars traveling west approach the Mohegan intersection at very high speeds. Cars turn east on Route 7, cars turn east on Route 7 at Anandaga. They typically don't go to the gas station. The comprehensive plan for Route 7 is not in jeopardy because of this application. Other development has been approved along Route 7. The Holocaust Museum, a worthy and welcome addition to our town, will have a much greater impact on Route 7 than this application. Commercialization will one day come to Route 7, because the town will need tax revenue. This application is not the tipping point. An additional point, I think it must be stated that people chose to purchase homes that are near a very busy state highway and an operating gas station and service center. I'm not trying to be impolite. Those are simply the facts. I can't make the application, I can't make the applicant's operation go away. They aren't going away, nor should they. The affected parties should negotiate in good faith to have their needs addressed while allowing the applicant to upgrade his operations, making them safer, more efficient, and be able to carry on and perform needed services for the community. His business is an asset to our neighborhood and to the town at large. Mohegan Hills is my home, too. It's a place where I know almost everyone in the neighborhood. I certainly know all the parties associated with this issue, and I'm sensitive to their needs. The applicant is our neighbor. He's a taxpayer for both his business, his home, and he's a member of our community. I really do believe that the board, the town, and the parties in the neighborhood need to lean in to find a fair, complete solution to support our neighbor and his operations. Saying no because of a dated regulation is unacceptable to me. I appreciate your time and applaud the work you do. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
My name is Jonathan Wells. I live on Cayuga Court. I am a lifelong resident of Niskiuna. I am in full support of Harry's expansion. I think, much like our town, as our town grows, our businesses need to grow. Our town hall was quite small many years ago, and we've moved into this much larger, updated facility. And I think that has served us well, and it's served our community well, much like Harry's Service Center does the same thing. It's been there for over 75 years, and I know a lot of the And I know a lot of the residents support Harry and view him in high regard as a neighbor as well as myself. I think we need to look at this from a tax-based perspective. And I'd like to echo Tim's statements that I think they're a viable solution for the neighbors that have concerns can be addressed quite easily with some sight plan adjustments. That's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Handelman. I live at 2302 Cayuga Road. I've lived there for 22 years. I've been a resident of Niskiuna for just about all of my life, except for seven years in Clifton Park, but happy to be back in Niskiuna. I am a neighbor of Harry's. I fully support his request for a zoning variance. I think he is the ideal business owner. He lives in the community, he lives in the neighborhood where he's running his business. He's owner, he's an owner, an operator, and a neighbor. He's been a great neighbor. It's super convenient to have a service station two blocks from my house. And I would think it cuts down on traffic for all the people that live in the vicinity and walk to get their car serviced. The service station predated, I would guess, everyone who's living in the neighborhood, so it's not a surprise that it's there. If we were talking about replacing a playground or a park, I would be the first person standing up here opposing it. But that's not what we're doing. We're talking about a service station that's dated and small and cramped. It's not safe for the employees, it don't have a bathroom inside. All he wants to do is make it safer for his employees, make it nicer for his customers, improve the neighborhood, which he's been doing as long as I've known him, which is 22 years, improve the neighborhood, improve the business, improve the safety for his employees. And so I fully support it. I think it's a good idea. If there are compromises that need to be made, I'm sure, you know, you and your wisdom will work that out. But I do think it's a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Kathleen Goska, residing at Cayuga Court. I'm here to express my strong support for the proposal of the expansion of Harry's Service Center. While I understand and respect concerns about preserving our neighborhood's character, I believe the expansion deserves approval for several important facts. The station has been a cornerstone of our community for over 75 years, predating current zoning laws. As a landmark business, it has stood the test of time, and now the opportunity presents itself to update it to meet modern standards. The proposed expansion aims to improve the aesthetics and functionality of the business, enhancing the customer experience and the overall appeal of the surrounding area. Upgrades to the electrical, plumbing, parking, and structure will make the business safer, more efficient, and more organized, benefiting both the business and its neighbors. This is an improvement on an existing business, not an introduction of new commercial activity. Modernizing an establishment, modernizing an established business does not change the neighborhood's character, it strengthens it. These upgrades will help ensure the business remains a vital thriving part of the community for years to come, potentially boosting property values and attracting investments to the area. A well-managed, well-maintained business can continue to thrive in residential neighborhoods without compromising their integrity. This is a unique opportunity to support a local landmark while improving its functionality and aesthetic presence, ensuring it continues to serve the community for the long term. It's also important to note that the applicant and his family reside in the adjacent property and are active, engaged members of the community. Over the years, they have supported local events, youth programs, and charitable initiatives. Approving this expansion will strengthen their ability to continue to reinvest in our community. Before I conclude, I urge everyone to view the recording of the town meeting from October 21st. That's available online. This is the same meeting that the board chairman announced the agenda item was to be tabled, but he allowed certain residents to speak. Allowing any discussions to take place on an agenda item that was tabled shouldn't have been allowed and unfair to the applicant. During the discussion, one residence, one resident raised concerns about the fatalities along Route 7 attempting to link them to the proposed expansion. Implying there's any connection is ignorant and irrelevant. There was also a comment about the owner's vehicles being parked on Anandaga Road, which is no longer the case. But there was no mention of school buses, landscaping trucks, or delivery vehicles idling in the same area or elsewhere along Niskiuna town roads. Attempting to link unrelated issues to the business expansion lacks merit. Evaluations of the proposal should be based on the facts and objectives, not selective observations or prejudice, which was evident watching that video on 1021. Some neighbors need to be reminded that Niskiuna is celebrated for its diversity and inclusiveness. I urge the town board to evaluate this application fairly and focus on the facts and the positive impacts it will bring to the community, unlike how the 1021 meeting was conducted. In conclusion, this project represents an opportunity for a positive enhancement, not a threat to anybody's neighborhood. I encourage the residents and decision-makers to support this thoughtful modernization, which will benefit our community for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Balant Kingra. I live at 2140 Cayuga Court. I watched the videos of last month's town hall where neighbors expressed their concerns about the gas station expansion. Unfortunately, there was no representative present to advocate for the business, which is concerning, given that it had been agreed that the item would be tabled until next meeting. After reviewing the proposal, the blueprints of the expansion, and watching the meeting, I believe most neighbors' concerns will be addressed by the expansion. The issue of employees parking on Anandaga Road was raised. I believe that this would be resolved by the expansion as it would increase the number of parking spaces in the lot as zoning allows for increased parking as well. Currently, there are only two designated spots, one of which is a handicap space. Concerns of the number of cars that were in the lot were also raised during the last meeting. The expansion would help alleviate parking lot congestion by adding more bays, which would allow for a faster turnover of vehicles to their owners. The claims that were made, the claims made that the gas station would make, making our neighborhood unsafe and causing accidents on Route 7 are not supported by any correlation to the business. As many neighbors have pointed out, the gas station has been there for years, long before the current owner took the business over. The real issue lies with the drivers on Route 7 and the speed allotted to it, not to the gas station itself. Regarding neighbors' concerns about blind spots created by parked cars on the corner of the lot, the owner took immediate action by marking the area with no parking caution lines. Over time, neighbors have raised some concerns, and each time, staff members at the gas station have dropped what they've been doing, not only listened, but promptly addressed them. The proposed expansion project is designed to enhance the safety of neighbors, customers, and employees. And it's worth noting that the neighbor also lives in the neighborhood. The building has been in place for many years with few updates, and the expansion would help reduce congestion, making the area safer for everyone who uses the business, and also just safer in general for the employees and to make the town a little bit more, the building more up to date. Niskiuna has been long known as a community that thrives with families and close-knit relationships. The owner has always treated his family, his customers and neighbors like family and with respect. He treats his customers and neighbors with the utmost respect. His commitment to, his commitment to a family-oriented approach is reflected not only through his demeanor, but also in the way that he runs his business. And any, any customer that has come to the shop knows that he will drop whatever to take care of them, along with the staff members. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Terry Kusowski. I live at 930 Northumberland Drive in Niskiuna, the old Avon Crest Development across the other side of Route 7 from the service station. Lived there since 1986. I've been, I've worked and traveled through Route 7 since 1980. Harry, Harry's my neighbor. I consider, he's our neighbor, actually. He's our neighbor, my friend. He and his staff are hard-working, friendly, helpful, and trustworthy. When I bring my car to Harry, I don't worry about what the response is going to be because I know it's going to be an honest, fair calculation of what needs to be done and how much it should cost. I think, I'm not sure, there's probably one, maybe two other service areas in Old Niskiuna. That could be the reason he has so many cars on his lot, besides the fact that he does, performs good service for a fair price, but there's no other place to go. Why do people come to Niskiuna? They come to, most people come, I know, come to Niskiuna for the school district, for the school district or for their grandchildren being here, for the socioeconomic character of the town, for convenience to work, for cultural, educational, medical, and access to transportation hubs and service. That's why we're here. I think Harry's station performs one of those vital services, you know, to the town. And I personally would not want to have to travel 20, 25 minutes to go somewhere to get my car serviced in inclement weather. Many people have given their own antidotes. I've got my own, as far as times when Harry has performed door-to-door service for us to help us get our grandkids to preschool because the car wouldn't start. The business has been there for 75 years. I happen to know the prior owners. He was a professional manager. He had two, two sons that gave a go of it for about five years. One was, had a degree in engineering. And his other son, and as I said, they worked at it for about four or five years. They couldn't make it work. You know, just basically, it's basically the same business that's being performed now is being performed then. They just couldn't do it on the volume. So they, they left. Luckily, after a while, Harry, you know, stepped in and, you know, took it over. And hopefully with the approved expansion, he'll be able to provide an even better service for the next 50 years. Sadly, yeah, Choice Connected Road is part of the Niskiuna neighborhood, but it's also a four-lane highway with now a middle lane for turnovers. I think we've had some data, people have cited, you know, where accidents are caused. I'll tell you personally, if I'm not at a stoplight, I don't want to make a left-hand turn onto Route 7. And maybe, maybe the town, working with the state, ought to, you know, prohibit that through an ordinance. I don't know if you can. But, you know, it's, it's not, it's a high speed. I wouldn't travel along Route 7 and, to take a Sunday stroll in the country, you know, and expect that kind of, that kind of response from the highway and my other drivers. If I wanted to do that, I would go into the country, I guess, so. I think people have talked about the issue with side street parking and on-street parking. I guess that, you know, where I'll end is that I support Harry's proposal. He's trustworthy, he has integrity, as does his staff. And, you know, I hazard to think what the future would be like if his business wasn't there. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jackie Budka. I live at 2329 Algonquin Road. Harry is my neighbor, and I appreciate having his business nearby. I support his request for variance. I have seen his building plans, I have watched the previous meeting. I support a lot of the points that were made before me in favor of his proposal. So I'm not going to rehash all of that. But I will bring up that the most glaring thing that stood out to me from the previous meeting was the lack of tangible evidence to support the claims that were being made. If people have a valid concern for why these changes should not be made, they should be able to support it with evidence and not just have it be what they think is going to happen. Because at that point, what anybody else thinks is going to happen is equally as likely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Eileen Handelman. I'm a lifelong resident of Niskiuna and currently residing at 2302 Cayuga Road, six houses away from Harry's business. I'm here to offer a different perspective other than what I saw on that disheartening YouTube recording at the last meeting. Those two commercial businesses, one being Harry's in question, have been there, a part of this community since I got here in 1972. And one of them, as everyone has said, is owned by our neighbor, Harry. He's someone who exemplifies the very values, I think, our state and our community, I hope, strives to promote, which is offering opportunities to our next generation here in New York State and in our community in Niskiuna, fostering that brain power, keeping it here, and cultivating a new wave of business owners and community leaders. He's enhanced our actual neighborhood beyond his business with his home. He has brought his family with him. His father has been a part of our community for many, many years. And now he's really working hard to keep his kids here and build a business that can meet future needs. So I'm hoping you'll all think about what we've all said here tonight, the other points of view. And I'm really in favor of this. I really feel that it reflects our ideals, the beautification investment he's planning to do, hopefully even building a home for his own kids right in our own neighborhood. There's no better way to show your commitment to Niskiuna than actually investing with both your business and your family. As for the traffic concerns, that's been a longstanding issue all of my life. I've lost friends back in the day on that road. Our neighborhood has always been a cut-through. That's not a symptom of something Harry's done. In fact, you know, let's consider that maybe a well-fought-out plan, as Balant said, could improve all those issues we talked about, the off-road parking challenges. And remember, he's also vested in those traffic patterns. So I'm really pleased to be able to meet all of you tonight and share those thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Larry Ritter.
Could you pull the microphone up, please? Thank you.
Sure can. Is that better?
Yes.
Larry Ritter. I lived in this community for 35 years. My sons went to Niskiuna, were graduated from Niskiuna High School. I took my cars to Harry the whole time I lived in Niskiuna. I do not live in Niskiuna right now. But when I heard of this, I had to come and let you hear my voice. Not only that, I was a part of committees in Niskiuna to talk about diversity and inclusion. When we were looking at, how can we make our community more diverse? Well, that's one of the ways right there. It's because with his business. And the other thing is, with, with Harry's business, he helps every other business in this community. He participates in whatever the community is doing. He gives time, he gives money, and he always supports this community. So what I, my question is, how as a community can we not support him? Because the thing that you always talk about on your committee and boards is, let's have conversations about how we can make it work. This is a person who has family here, who is committed to the community, and who only wants to see everything be its best. So I would ask of you, let's stop saying why something should go and say, "How do we make it work so it's great for all of us?" Because one of the things you don't want to do is lose business in Niskiuna. That's not what you want to do. You want to build business in a way that is going to be responsible and supportive in making our community even better. And you notice I said "our community." I don't live here today, but I was here for 35 years, and I still consider this a wonderful place to live and a wonderful community. So wonderful community and nice people to live by, let's make this work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Alice Rubenfeld.
My name is Alice Rubenheld. And since I'm older than Methuselah, I've known Harry for so long that I knew him when he was dating Paula, a blessed memory. So I'm like 103. The question, if there were a question of who is the nicest guy in the room, Harry would win the award. If the question was, who's out there always to help you when you need help? If Harry would win. The question is before you, this should be a zoning board question. Your job as the planning board is to look at the long-range plan for what you want of Niskiuna and how it should look. Consequently, let's use an example. Upper Union Street on the north side, how do you like the way that looks today with that god-awful Albany Med building that was also put together by buying three houses under straw buyers so that the houses could be knocked over and the building could be I believe that the gas station should be there and modification should be allowed to be made, but that's not this board's decision. That is the zoning board's decision. This board has to decide, and I'd like you to ask yourselves if you're qualified, I don't know if any of you at all have any background in either urban or town planning. You should be leaning on Laura, who has a degree in it. And you should decide, how do you want Troy Road to look 35 years from now? Because I guarantee you that if you give, if you give an expansion on an obvious corner like that, do I like, I think Harry's a great mechanic, probably the best I ever had, okay? And I want him to stay. And I encourage small business. But Niskiuna has always been defined as a bedroom community. That is, businesses are on the perimeters except for small neighborhood businesses. So you wind up with a Knott Street. You wind up with a catastrophe that turned into Knott Street East. You wind up with the CVS in the middle of town that was once only professional offices. I remember when it was only doctors and dentists there. Slowly but surely, you give up the identity of the town when you make ad hoc decisions without a long-term plan. You're very fortunate that you have a town planner. I don't know what any of you have to offer as credentials as to why you should be capable of making those decisions. I recently found out that you have a town engineer who is allowed to make, is allowed to make recommendations to you. But then I found out that the town board has the right to override those recommendations. Why would you pay someone a salary and then let, let laypeople decide that that isn't good enough? If you don't think he's good enough to give you a decision, to respect his decisions, fire him and get someone else. I am looking at a group of laypeople. When I sat on the zoning board of appeals, before I could sit on it, I was vetted by the chairman that I had credentials, that I brought something to the table. What do each of you bring to the table? Are you capable of making these decisions for my long-term welfare? I've lived here 50 years. I've watched the town crumble, brick by brick, in Upper Union Street, Knott Street East, one crummy decision after another. I think Harry's a great guy. I think if you, if, if this, this should be a variance issue, not a, not a planning board issue. But if it comes to that, there should be architectural details given that keep it within a certain framework. You know, if you want to build a McDonald's in Briar Cliff Manor, it can't have arches. It can't be red and yellow. It has to fit into the architecture of Briar Cliff Manor. Go down to some of the small towns, see how they've managed. Learn about how heavy the decisions that you make, how, how much they influence the future of this town. I think that this is less about Harry and more about what you need to do and the thought you have to give. The very question that someone questioned diversity in this town? Are you kidding me? I have sold real estate for 50 years. The only thing anybody cares about is, can he afford to have a gardener like I have a gardener? Can he afford to have his snowplowed like I have my snowplowed? That's all that matters to anybody anymore.
Okay, I'm going to ask you to summarize quickly, please.
I don't think this decision belongs in your hands. What belongs in your hands is for you to lay out for the people sitting in this meeting, a long-term plan for where Niskiuna is going to be 25 years from now.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Eileen, Algonquin Road. I agree, this is not about Harry. Harry's a nice guy. I really like Harry. I also object to some of the attempts to talk about diversity. I mean, I, I'm not even going to address that. The last meeting, that comment about the last meeting, the several comments, I don't know if they were like organized talking points, but come on, it's privilege of the floor. It happens all the time. There was no like, so I want to bring this back to Route 7. I Googled most dangerous roads in upstate New York. A subreddit said, and there's one, Route 7 is lethal. And someone wrote, I feel like this whole road is cursed. As far as the comments about, oh, it's not really near Algonquin. Oh, yes, it is. If you were anywhere near that last one, in May, Shamir Shaw, Algonquin Road. If that tree was not there, he would have gone right into the house. I'll get to the other fatalities because I think people gloss over, oh, it's only been eight deaths, it's only been nine deaths. Those are actual people with families, so we're going to talk about those people. Somebody said Route 7 is a strode. I learned a new word. What is a strode? It's basically where road is not sure if it wants to be a street or a road. So a road is like a highway. So this is a strode. And how do you prevent strodes? Good planning, to the previous woman's point, which I think we can safely say has not been in effect, given the problems on that road and the history of deadly accidents. So how do you avoid a strode? Limit access, seek to close existing accesses, keep people and bikes away from cars in a separate safe space, don't try to build anything, simplify, move vehicles quickly, period. Quote from Bob Carney, Schenectady County DA, at a plea deal for one of the people who pleaded to vehicular manslaughter. And why is it always that the people that are on Route 7, that are drugged up, under the influence of meth, fentanyl, alcohol, you name it, why do they always walk away? I can't get past that. These people die, innocent people die, and they just walk away unscathed. I can't get past that. Anyway, Bob Carney said, "Since the pandemic, we have seen horrible cases of people making stupid and selfish decisions to drive while seriously impaired, and innocent people have paid for that with their lives." There have been four fatalities on Route 7 within a year, Carney said, adding, "His office has contacted DOT to see if the road can be made safe." Earlier this year, after another fatal, former supervisor Puccioni said, you know, "We can't police our way out of this issue. We need calming measures." That's planning board speak. The town is taking steps to install red light cameras, lowering the speed limit. Police chief, I don't know if he's still the police chief, Jordan Cooken, said aggressive driving has increased with six fatalities since 2020. So some of these notes were wrong. Two of them are in the area right where we are now, and there's no price we can, there is no price we can put on our lives. Shamir Shaw, May 2024, crashed into a tree, Algonquin Road, 22 years old. March 2024, AJ Small, 14, died after injuries from being hit by a car near Belville. AJ was in ninth grade, he loved old books, and he was known for his kindness.
I'm going to ask you to summarize.
Well, not summarizing because I think it went way long, so I'm going to do my thing. April 2023.
We're asking, we're asking all, all people.
Are you kidding me? There were people that were speaking for five minutes, and this is important, I'm trying to remember people who have died.
In addition to the fatalities, if you have other things to summarize, please, please add them.
Pilar Secord, a reader singer, was 59. She died in a two-car crash on Route 7. Her husband, the day she died, wrote on Facebook, "Hello all, this is David, Pilar's husband. I hope it's okay to leave this with heavy heart and all the sorrow in the universe. I'm posting, Pilar got into an awful car accident. She did not make it. She was my best friend and my love. I miss her so much. I'd rather she be here with me right now." Anne Burchhardt, 55, Glenville, hit by a drugged-up driver. You can see the memorial there. Denise Guthinger, 68, making deliveries for Lang's Pharmacy when a drunk driver who already had a DUI crossed the lane, hit her head on. July 21, Dennis Farrell and his wife were stopped at a light on seven, turn the light she killed, drunk driver hit them. His wife said, "There was just no place to go. We were trapped. I could hear her engine racing before she slammed into us. She never even tried to brake." So I will skip to the end and ask you what might better planning have reduced accidents and death on Route 7? Could planning in its highest, best form be implemented to limit further death? Because if we're talking about adding more risks to the road, then we're planning for more death is essentially what's going to happen. And I also resent anybody telling me that if there's facts. I have two 17-year-old daughters who are going to start driving, and I pray that I don't get a call like these people have gotten, that their loved ones have been taken out on Route 7 because the county, Niskiuna Planning Board, or whoever, is not doing anything to address that road. Something needs to change and be fixed before we add more traffic.
Thank you.
My name is Karen Berry. I am a resident of Niskiuna and I live at 2336 Cayuga Road. I'm going to address only two of my concerns about my opposition to the applicant's proposed variance, one being the trash, two being vehicles. One of the most visible impacts of commercial development is the increase of trash and waste. Prior to the no trespassing signs being nailed on trees in the lot adjacent to mine, for many years, I had maintained the wooded area along Anadaga Road. Since I take great pride in my community, cherish the appearance and aesthetics of our neighborhood, I was disgusted to see the amount of trash along the road, in the grass, and the garbage that blew several feet into the wooded area. I often collected garbage, garbage bags of discarded bottles, cans, packaging of cigarettes, candy wrappers, and other junk. Increasing the products being sold and increasing traffic from and to this location would consequently lead to more trash being discarded throughout our neighborhood. Any neighbor here tonight would agree that I have spent a tremendous amount of time outdoors with my kids and doing yard work. I think only Lena Degenoff, the Hosta Queen, definitely has me beat. I can attest that through the 24 years that I've lived here, numerous cars on a weekly basis blew through the four-way stop sign on the corner of Cayuga and Anadaga Road as they sped past my house. More times than not, these vehicles turned into the gas station and then, after leaving, sped back through the neighborhood. It is without a doubt that with expansion and commercial development comes increased traffic. More business means more employees, customers, and vehicles. In the case of the applicant's expansion, additional bays and larger convenience store would mean more vehicles being driven in and around our peaceful neighborhood after getting gas, stopping at the convenience store, or having their car serviced. Let me give you one quick example of just one of my concerns. Once while I was out in my yard, my attention was drawn to the noise of someone starting to accelerate at a high rate of speed. I observed the vehicle stop suddenly midway down Cayuga Road. As they continued past me, I observed it was one of the applicant's employees. I can only assume that they were testing the brakes on the system, and I hope the brakes worked. I understand that vehicles must be tested after, but as our neighborhood is generally tranquil, I'm worried that this will occur on a much more regular basis. The busiest street in the vicinity typically is Mohegan, and it is a cut-through to Rosendale to connect to other neighborhoods. With Algonquin, Cayuga, and Anadaga being relatively quiet streets, this is potentially hazardous to my neighbors, especially those with young children. Increasing the number of bays and vehicles being worked on would only increase the number of vehicles being test-driven throughout the residential neighborhoods, and as such, I'm against it. I concur with what has been said by my neighbors and our concerned Niskiuna residents who have spoken out again at this podium, called the town, or sent letters, postcards, speaking out in opposition to this expansion. It is my hope that the town planning board, that you weigh the following factors carefully. One, what precedent this will set for further commercial development on Route 7? Two, what is the adverse impact on the community's character? And three, are we as a community willing to choose an expansion of a residentially-zoned grandfather commercial property at the expense of the unique neighborhoods along Route 7? Thank you.
Thank you.
Just going to put my timer on. My name is Don Kinsella. I live on Fieldstone Drive, which is, and we've lived in Niskiuna for more than 40 years. It's a neighborhood where people cut through to get from Consol Road to State Street. And we've lived in five different spots in Niskiuna, and I think every spot we've lived in is a spot where people use the roads to cut through to get places. Harry's gas station, as I understand it, has, since I've only been here 40 years, I don't know the complete history, but that's been there all along. Whether Harry's permitted to improve the building and as a consequence, improve the business or not, the gas station's going to be there. It's not going to make any difference to the traffic on a state highway that runs through the middle of Niskiuna, just like the car dealerships at the end of the road below where I live aren't making a witness difference if it's one car dealership or another that's on Central Ave or State Street. And everybody who bought a house in Niskiuna is aware, or should be aware, that they're living on a street that's going to be, have traffic passing through that's not from their I took a look before coming here today at the zoning ordinance because I decided I didn't want to talk about stuff that isn't really relevant for you folks. And it seems to me you have a problem because of the ambiguities of the definitions. The gasoline service station is defined, but it really doesn't define what Harry has. A lot is defined, but it limits a non-conforming use to a single use, which doesn't make sense since a non-conforming use is something that's outside of that zoning ordinance. Convenience store, and I may be mistaken because I didn't do an artificial intelligence word search, but the definition of convenience store doesn't appear in the zoning ordinance. And I noticed that the building department seems to say that that's a second non-conforming use. I'd submit, as someone who's been driving for 60-some-odd years in upstate New York, that every gas station I was ever familiar with 60 years ago or in 1971 sold bits of food, soda, potato chips, whatnot, everything, oil, tires, you name it. So that building, I'm sure, was a convenience store before 1971, before all these definitions were instituted. So it seems to me that all boils down to one thing, whether you're going to let, have that spot persist like it's always persisted as a gas station, because nobody's going to be building a house on. to be building a house on it, or are you going to allow the current owner to improve the lot and prove the building and make it add value to the community? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Samir. I'm one of the worker for Haiti. Last meeting, when I watched it, I watched it eight times with my family. There was a lot of stuff that was said in it. One thing that I used to park on Dogga Road on the side. It's a public road. I could park there. But Haiti came up to me saying, "Please do not park there," which I did. I didn't park there anymore. But not today, when I came to this meeting, nobody from any side said, "Why was the school buses parked there every single morning and they're smoking a cigarette right next to the shop?" Which is bad for the environment, for me too. I'm a young kid. I'm 20 years old. And that, some of the accident that happened on Route 7, if my mom was taking, I was a 20-years-old kid. I'm 20 years old myself. I go to the bathroom, which is outside the Mickey and X shop, and the door is closed. And I cannot, never expect if I can make a life from there. You never know, because people drive crazy down that road. If we truly, this is about a zoning. I'm sorry. This is about a zoning area, not for a traffic or anything else. If we truly care about traffic, we should put lights, but red light cameras. Nobody's going to go fast. Everybody by Route 7 goes fast. I know it's a 40 miles per hour zone. Every day, there's a police that pulled over everybody right by Haiti Service Center, and they were given a citation for speeding. It's not because of the business, because you cannot control all the drivers. They want to go as fast as they want. It's not because of the business, because there was a business. Oh, let me go fast. And we have, I took a lot of pictures from last meeting. Someone said, like, "We parked on Dogga Road," but the lady was the farmer in front of her house, and they parked right in front of their house, but that's not a big issue. But it's only an issue when we do it. And this meeting is all about garbage. If you go back right now, there's not a single garbage in that lot, because Haiti makes me clean it up all the time. I'm a messy guy. I don't clean up after myself at all. And Robert, one of my coworkers, he always picks on me on that, because I never pick up after myself, and they always yell at me. And I always go up in the parking lot, clean all the garbage that left, like, customer they use the pump. They don't care. And at the end of the day, this is a community member. He's a community member. Like I always say, if one part of your body is hurting, all, the whole body will be in pain. Right now, this community member is in pain, because all that people are talking bad about him. It's about business. Talk about the business, what's going to happen, not about the person, the guy, what happened to him, what he did. It's not right, but whatever you guys want. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
I am Carla Dougal, and I live at 2322 Algonquin Road. I will say I do like having a gas station close to the house. We buy our gas propane tanks for the grill there. We also get our cars serviced at Harry's. I enjoy being able to drop our cars off and then walk home. And Harry and everyone who works there are always pleasant and professional. I do, however, think that a 2,000-square-foot addition is substantial and will have an adverse effect on the surrounding properties. More service bays will likely bring more cars, traffic, and noise. Also, as mentioned by others, it will set a precedent for other commercial properties on Route 7 that are grandfathered in, laying ground for the potential development of large commercial buildings at those sites. Another consideration for this variance is the Route 7 linkage study that will be done in the next year. This property falls within the limits of the study area between St. David's Lane and the Colony Town Line. This study will examine how to create a safer road for all modes of transportation with potential recommendations to develop better-quality infrastructure for pedestrians, bicyclists, and transit users, which includes creating better connections between the neighborhoods to the north and south of Route 7. As part of the study, I believe they may look at ingress and egress, or entryway improvements along this segment of Route 7, and could potentially have recommendations that impact traffic patterns. I think it is important to see the recommendations of the study before site changes are considered.
Thank you.
Hi, Craig Peterson, 1032 Anandaga. Just a little background. I grew up here. I've been here for 57 years. I've seen lots of changes. I don't want to make it personal. It's gone that way. I think that's bad. I feel really uncomfortable with that. I think as the Town Planning Board, you need to continue to follow the guidelines that were given to you. And one of those guidelines is the 2013 Town Comprehensive Plan. And I think that's what you need to focus on and not consider a lot of the interpersonal relationships and things like that. Consider what you're supposed to do as a Town Planning Board. With that in mind, I'd like to read you a letter that I'm going to present to the Town Planning Board. Dear Members of the Niskiuna Town Planning Board, I am writing to express my opposition to the request for zoning variance for 2339 Troy's Connectity Road, Niskiuna. Granting this variance would be contrary to the principles outlined in the 2013 Niskiuna Comprehensive Plan and would negatively impact the character and integrity of our community, particularly the designated Schaefer neighborhood. The Schaefer neighborhood, if you haven't read the plan, and it's out there, okay, it is our neighborhood, extends from the Schaefer's house across Route 7 into Harry's neighborhood, my neighborhood. That's what we're talking about. That Schaefer neighborhood, named for the builder and conservationist who chose Niskiuna to live in and locate many of his distinctive homes, the same Niskiuna resident who the town has a room named after here in our town hall. Paul Schaefer was a pivotal figure in our town's history, as well as the Adirondack Reserve. He envisioned neighborhoods and homes that harmonized the natural landscape and uphold the values of conservation and thoughtful development. I think that's what the Planning Board needs to consider. The neighborhood surrounding 2339 Troy's Connectity Road, named after him, is a testament to his name and vision. It's characterized by the many notable homes he built in this location, its quiet residential streets, commitment to sustainable development. A zoning change would clearly disrupt this balance in the residents of this area. Do not want that. They would clearly lose the enjoyment that Paul Schaefer strived to create. I lived in one of his homes. That home was built before the gas station was built. The gas station was built in 1967. That home was built, I mean, in 1960, I heard. My home was built in 1956. The 2013 Comprehensive Plan emphasizes the importance of preserving the local charm and environmental integrity that defines our town. One of the key objectives stated in the plan is to protect and enhance the residential quality of life. Now, if you go into the Comprehensive Plan, it specifically states, although the amount and intensity of commercial uses along the corridor within the town itself are not extensive at present, the town should take steps to ensure that trend extends into the future. It's written in the plan. So follow the guidelines. Allowing the requested zoning variance undermines this objective by allowing the excessive expansion of the commercial property well beyond its current zone. I have no objection to it being there. I use it, and I find it convenient, but I don't want it to get bigger. That would not align with the current residential nature of the Schaefer neighborhood. Moreover, the Comprehensive Plan also allows for responsible growth management, ensuring that any new development is compatible with existing infrastructure. Allowing the zoning variance would certainly lead to increased traffic, noise, light pollution. I know there's differences of opinion on that. I think we can change your mind in that regard. These would be detrimental to the quality of life of the neighborhood of those residents. In conclusion, I urge the Town Planning Board to consider the long-term consequences of granting the requested zoning variance, preserving the character, history, and environmental integrity of our town and its unique neighborhood should remain a priority. Let's continue to abide by the defined objectives of the plan and to honor the legacy of Paul Schaefer by denying this request.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jolie Smith. I don't live in Niskiuna, but I have worked in Niskiuna, and my husband, Robert, is a mechanic at Harry Service Center. I've heard about the tragedies on the road, and they are indeed tragedies. I went to Shamir Shaw's funeral, and I taught A.J. Smullen. But acts of reckless or distracted driving have nothing to do with the applicant's business, but more to do with the congestion on Route 7. To imply otherwise is ludicrous. Route 7 is used as a gateway to go to Latham. People are going to speed on it and do what they want unless some sort of change is made in the road itself. That is not what is at hand right now. What is at hand is adding two bays to a garage that will improve safety, safety for the neighborhood, so that you won't have cars out, so it'll look a little nicer, where that seemed that's kind of important, and the safety of the employees, which I have to admit I'm biased, is very important to me. Harry Kingra has been a part of my family for years now. He came to my son's bar mitzvah. He is a good and honest businessman. If he thought that this project would in any way be detrimental to Niskiuna, there would be absolutely no way he would go forward with it, because, like everyone has said, he lives in the neighborhood. He values the neighborhood, and more importantly, he values Niskiuna. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Marina Piero, and I live at 1017 Anandaga Road, Niskiuna, across from the parcel of land in question. I'm here today to voice my strong opposition to the plan for 2339 Troy's Connectity Road, which includes a 150% expansion of the gas station in our residential area. This proposal far exceeds a 10% expansion limit established by town law, which is critical for maintaining the safety and character of our neighborhoods. A key concern is the proposed addition of a large convenience store. Convenience stores are frequently linked to safety and security challenges that are incompatible with a residential zone like ours. Number one, crime risks. Convenience stores are statistically associated with elevated crime rates. Research by the National Institute for Occupational Safety and Health shows that such establishments face a higher incidence of theft and violent crime than other retail environments. A survey done by the National Association of Convenience Stores highlights common issues like loitering, vandalism, and shoplifting, which pose significant safety risks, not only to the store, but also to the surrounding community. Number two, impact on families and children. This neighborhood is home to many families and young children. Introducing a high-traffic convenience store in this area increases risks. As studies have shown, these stores often attract transient visitors, petty crimes, and concerns like loitering, illegal activity, and increased vehicle traffic disproportionately impact residential areas, creating potential dangers for neighbors walking or biking nearby. Three, quality of life concerns. Beyond crime, the increased noise, traffic, and lighting disturbances from such an expansion would disrupt the quiet, family-friendly environment that neighbors cherish. These issues erode the sense of safety and comfort that makes this community a desirable place to live. The 10% expansion limit exists to prevent developments like this, which would alter the character of our neighborhood and jeopardize the well-being of its residents. A 150% expansion is not only excessive, but also sets a precedent for further erosion of the protections designed to safeguard residential zones. I urge the board to deny this request. Approving this request would prioritize business profits over the well-being and safety of the families who live here. Upholding our town's zoning laws is essential to preserving the safety, integrity, and livability of our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I am Kyle Piero, and I live at 1017 Anandaga Road, across from the parcel in question. I am here to oppose the proposed plan for the grandfathered lot at 233 Troy's Connectity Road. This decision you will make has significant implications, not just for this parcel, but for the future of Route 7, our town, and specifically, our neighborhood. Approving this proposed plan would fundamentally contradict the goals of the Niskiuna Comprehensive Plan, which serves as our blueprint for maintaining the town's residential charm and managing development thoughtfully. The Comprehensive Plan prioritizes preserving Niskiuna's character, preventing the kind of overdevelopment seen in neighboring communities like Colony, where Route 7 has become a hub of strip malls, fast-food chains, and congestion. Allowing this expansion to go forward would bring us closer to that scenario and diminish what makes Niskiuna unique. This decision also risks setting a precedent for further commercial development along Route 7, particularly at other grandfathered parcels in the area, including 3,000 Troy's Connectity Road, the IBW Local 236 Offices, 2967 Troy's Connectity Road, currently used for forestry, 2764 Troy's Connectity Road, a veterinary clinic, and finally, 2331 Troy's Connectity Road, now used as offices. Granting expanded uses at 2339 Troy's Connectity Road would make it difficult, if not impossible, to deny similar requests at these neighboring parcels. This domino effect would lead to significant increase in commercial activity, fundamentally altering the residential character of Route 7 and its surrounding neighborhoods. Once that trend begins, it will be nearly impossible to reverse. Furthermore, increased development at these properties would bring additional traffic, noise, light pollution, and transient visitors who have no connection to our neighborhood and therefore will not care for it the same way we do. This will erode our quality of life for nearby residents. These changes affect not only those living near Route 7, but all of us who value Niskiuna's peaceful residential environment. Some of the commenters tonight have noted that neighbors purchased their homes with full knowledge of the commercial nature of the property, but what they have failed to communicate to you is that we purchased that with the understanding that only 10% expansion was possible at the parcel in question. There has been coexistence under this agreement. The applicant's proposal disrupts that arrangement. As stewards of this community, the Planning Board is not only to consider the immediate interests of one property owner, but also the long-term implications for the entire town. Approving this expansion would undermine the goals of the Comprehensive Plan and jeopardize the character of Route 7 for future generations. I urge you to deny this request and ensure that Niskiuna remains a town that values thoughtful planning and residential appeal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, William Pfeifer, 2386 Algonquin Road. I'm conflicted about getting up here and speaking, because Harry is a good man. He's a good neighbor, a good businessperson, a good member of the community, but I fear for the expansion of any business activities, especially along the Route 7 corridor. His grandfather use should be allowed, but the expansion of any business, for the reasons that the pre-speaker outlined, I'm in opposition to expanding anything beyond what's already allowed. That's it.
Thank you.
How are we doing? Dave Ackley, 977 Inman Road. I find this interesting. On Maynard Keynes, there's an Airbnb, right? There are cars this summer that were flying through Inman, okay? And so, we're talking about keeping neighborhoods, right, safe and clean. It's just very interesting. I'm for Harry. I think that this should go forward. There's an issue there that you guys can't deal with, right? There are parties, loud music. I'm on 977. They're up in Maynard Keynes. I can hear them. So it's interesting that you've got these two things going on. I'm very interested to see what happens and how this turns out. You know, I was going to sit there. I'm very impressed with what these people have said. I'm a teacher, you know. I'm very impressed. You have two big issues here, right, sitting in your lap. That Airbnb is still going on, right? I've got people driving by, shouting out the window from Massachusetts, from New Hampshire, okay, drunk in the middle of the day. I'm a teacher. I'm home in the summer. Okay? They're transients, right? They're coming through. They're moving in. I'm very interested, very interested to see what happens here. I mean, I understand their neighborhood. You've got that issue to deal with too, and you've allowed it. They're there. They can be there. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Dan Cooten. I live in St. Mark's Lane in Niskiuna. I'm a new resident. I moved in here recently. I moved in here recently, and I was very relieved and fortunate to find that Harry's was a short walk from where I live. And although I'm a new resident, I think I can speak for some of the other residents who perhaps also have a truck that is 29 years out of warranty, because I'm never gonna take it to one of the main large garages on Route 7. But Harry's has served me perfectly for that one occasion. I've heard a lot of interesting comments, and I really frankly didn't know much of the story until I came tonight. But my view is that in our society, we need communities, and with our communities, we need businesses, and we need businesses that are profitable. And when I first went to Harry's, I thought, this doesn't look like it's a very sustainable business. So although I understand and hear a lot of the concerns about the appearance of the road, personally, because it's useful for me, I would be fearful that if development is not allowed, if this is not permitted, then the icon that has apparently been here for 75 years might not be here for much longer. So there's a business side to it as well as a residential appearance side of it. So that's my comment for tonight. Thank you.
Good evening.
My name is Jim Hazard. I live at 137 Killarney Drive. I don't live next to Harry, but I would like to. Great neighborhood. I moved into this neighborhood probably 10 years ago. There's a couple of things that everybody has said that echoed through this entire room about Harry's generosity, his service, everything else, but what resonates more to me is peace of mind. I know my daughter, my son, my wife can call Harry and text him at quarter seven in the morning, "Hey, I got a flat tire. Can you help me out?" You know what the answer is? Never no. Never one time has it been no. Between him and Robert, it's always been a yes. That means a lot to me. I travel every week, hundreds and hundreds of miles, and when I pull out of my driveway at five in the morning, and I know she wakes up at six to go to the hospital because she's a nurse in Saratoga, and she has a flat, this guy's gonna take care of her. That means a lot to me. I'm in the wine and liquor business, and one of the most brilliant people I've ever worked with was a guy named Ernest Gala, which probably most of you have heard that name. I've always asked him, when I worked with him, "Why are you so successful?" You know what his answer was? "'Cause if I live in the past, I'll die in the future." Keep that in mind.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jason Stanko. I live at 2375 Troy Schenectady Road. I have lived there since 1997. It is the first house directly on Route 7, next to Harry's service station. I was born and raised in Niskayuna, as were both my parents before me. And to be perfectly transparent, I am a licensed and registered architect, as well as a New York State building code enforcement official. I am also a New York State government official. As such, I'm speaking in public. I have to make this following disclaimer, that I am not here tonight as a representative of the New York government, nor do my opinions reflect those of New York State government. I am not anyway directly involved with the property or the project up for review. I am here purely as a neighbor. I watched the video of the previous planning board meeting from the 21st of October, when this project was not on the agenda, and I heard the concerns voiced by some of the neighbors. I noticed that a lot of the concerns were based upon feelings. No specific Niskayuna ordinance number nor uniform code violations were stated. It was all kind of based upon feelings. There were also concerns about parking on Anandaga Road. And the last time I checked, Anandaga Road was a public road, and parking is freely available to the public. There are not any no-parking signs on it. If the people of the neighborhood wish to restrict parking on any of those streets within their neighborhood, then I recommend they petition the Niskayuna Highway Department for such restrictions. Some of the previous concerns made it sound like the property in question was a residential property, because it's not a residence. Within my lifetime, which is 55 years, and going back to the original construction of that repair shop, which is at least 65 years, it has been a mixed occupancy motor vehicle repair shop. It is a business, and it has afforded allowances prohibited to residential property requirements. This service station provides a needed service to the community and provides a livelihood for its employees. As previously mentioned, a major concern was over the vehicles parked on the property. Yes, there are vehicles parked there. One can assume that most of them are in need of repair. That is why they're at a motor vehicle repair shop. This is perfectly acceptable per New York State Uniform Code, and I'm assuming as well Niskayuna's zoning requirements. I'm gonna skip over some of these because other people have already stated them. Mr. Kingra's property improvements have not stopped at his facility at the service station. He has done what has been within his legal rights to do so, but as he is a neighbor on Cayuga Court, in the time that he has lived there, he's improved that house and property in great fashion. It's been very impressive of what he has done. He is a man who clearly shows that he takes care of both his commercial property and his residential property. In the springtime, the service station, there are plenty of, an abundance of flowers planted. It's well-maintained. I don't see any trash that's there. In fact, this property has probably been in the nicest shape that I remember against what the previous had. As a building code enforcement official, I can state that this motor vehicle repair shop and property show no obvious infractions of the required New York State Uniform Code, including both the fire code and the property maintenance codes. Mr. Kingra clearly takes good care of his property as well as his residents. Previous concern from the prior meeting was in regards to businesses like this being open late at night. Since 2020, this business has been closing earlier and earlier. Currently, it closes at approximately 6:00 PM at the latest. At closing time, minimal lighting is on on the site, and the property's illumination is darkened. To me, a lot of the concern sounds like the neighbors no longer wish to live next to a service station. A service station that's probably been there for longer than their properties and their houses were built. What I think everyone is missing here is the big picture. This is a great opportunity for us. Mr. Kingra wants to construct in addition to his garage to help alleviate the quantity of cars legally parked on his property. A reduction of cars legally parked is something that sounds like the neighbors already want. If the neighbors wish to add certain caveats, say landscaping, arboritey, hedge, or some sort of visual buffer between the service station and the surrounding properties, then now is the time to do that with Mr. Kingra's proposed project. This should not necessarily be a simple yes-or-no planning vote tonight, but rather a process. The neighbors should be proactively providing realistic suggestions to the potential project, and if they are feasible, incorporated so that everybody can be satisfied with the results of the project.
Can I ask you to summarize quickly?
Sure. Okay, thank you. To me, I think this is a great opportunity for us all. I think that involving the public as much as possible will help try to satisfy as many people as possible, and will be best for the community at large. That is all I have. Thank you very much for your time.
Hi, my name is Jeremy Berry. I've been a resident of Niskayuna for 24 years at 2336 Kew Road. I'd like to read several excerpts from the town in Niskayuna's 2013 Comprehensive Development Plan. Some of you on the planning board were involved in the drafting of this document as members of the Comprehensive Plan Committee. However, many of the residents have not seen this document or have read it. I believe this is the core of our argument, and most importantly, these are not my words, but the words of town officials. I quote, "The Comprehensive Plan provides a roadmap that sets broad goals and objectives for the immediate and future preservation of valued community characteristics while allowing for the enhancement of smart and sustainable growth. This is accomplished by maintaining an appropriate balance between residential and commercial needs. As the town board, planning board, zoning board of appeals, and professional staff of the town are confronted with questions of land development, this plan provides the contextual and technical foundation to guide the outcome of both the incremental and intentional effects of their decisions." Additionally, I quote, "Although the current plan represents a departure from Plan 2003 and maintains an appropriate level of continuity with earlier comprehensive plans, relying on historic townwide land use and development patterns as its foundation. In addition, recognizing that Niskayuna is a diverse community, committee members examine the town with both a local neighborhood and townwide view when identifying community strengths and needs. Throughout the planning process, the committee worked to ensure that the goals, objectives, recommendations, and implementation tasks made herein reflect Niskayuna's diverse attributes." More specifically, here's a list of key points mentioned throughout the introduction section of the Comprehensive Plan, and I quote, "New development should not compromise the integrity of the surrounding neighborhoods. Preserve and maintain the valuable historic, cultural, architectural, and archaeological heritage of Niskayuna for the benefit of present and future residents. Protect residential neighborhoods from commercial, industrial, and office encroachment. In regards to commercial development on Troy Road, the goal is to sustain and enhance the town's residential character as discussed throughout this plan, while providing for complementary non-residential uses in appropriate locations. In regards to the development in residential areas, commercial development in residential areas may destabilize neighborhoods by changing their character and making homes less desirable, thereby lowering their value. With regards to the identifiable commercial areas within the town, I don't need to list them. Everyone knows Troy Schenectady Road is not a commercial area, anyone, nor does anyone want it to be one. As it relates to historic preservation, the following is a collection of existing buildings and sites that in their own way have played a particular role or significantly contributed to the town's history. We all know the train station on the Mohawk River, the Niskayuna Reformed Church, the Grange, Paul Schaefer's home, are just a few. Paul Schaefer's hand-built homes and the neighborhood designated by the town as the Schaefer Neighborhood is also in that list of historical structures. I don't think I can say it better. Quote, "The purpose of this issued paper is to identify buildings and sites that have contributed to the town's history, continually add cultural value, and should be protected from inappropriate development." I know it seems like I said a lot, but in fact, it wasn't me talking. It's the Comprehensive Plan, which was drafted by the Comprehensive Plan Committee, which consists of a diverse group of caring, tax-paying residents from within our beloved town. Let's support the people of this community by rejecting the applicant's proposal, expansion of Route 7. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify what I was saying before. You know, you're talking about the Comprehensive Plan, but again, here on Maynard Keynes, which is a neighborhood, right, it's cul-de-sac. They've got little kids, and we're allowing that to happen, all right? So I think what Harry wants to do, right, I think he's doing it above and beyond what he needs to do. If we're gonna allow an Airbnb in Maynard Keynes, right, a cul-de-sac with little kids, right, we have to allow Harry, all right, to expand his business, all right? So we can go back to 2013 or wherever.
Yeah, direct your comments to the board, please.
Sure, yeah. I'm just, you know, we gotta be fair with this thing, right? And I think the other people that have come before me have really said it well. So I think we should go ahead with this, but certainly that's your decision. And I think you have to think about what's going on at Maynard Keynes as well, okay? Thank you.
First thing I want to do is thank every one of you. I really appreciate the service that you're doing for our community. This is not an easy job, and I'm not jealous of your position. One thing I wanted to say, it's not a question of Harry's character. I know him. He's an awesome guy. It's not a question of...
Did you put your name and address for the record?
Paul Romeo, 2331 Algonquin Road. Not a question of Harry's character. He's an awesome guy, great mechanic. We love him, right? It's not a question of convenience, having the business in the neighborhood. It's a question of preserving the quality of life in Niskayuna, the safety of the neighborhood, the neighborhood I just bought in, the neighborhood I'm investing, because my house completely burnt, and we lost everything. I'm investing a lot of money now into that neighborhood. I'm at the end of Algonquin. It's a very quiet neighborhood. We love it. It's safe at the moment. The question, actually, the gentleman just before me, I was undecided tonight, but the gentleman with the white hair just explained it. When you allow Harry to do this, you destroy the nature. Now you have to allow the Airbnb, right? So now what happens next? It's the precedent. That came clear to me tonight, based on the arguments from Harry's side. It's not about Harry's character. We love him. It's about the precedent, preserving the neighborhood, and keeping the neighborhood safe, and preserving Niskayuna. Thank you again for all you do for Niskayuna. I really appreciate all your efforts.
Good evening. Dennis Romero, 1122 Ruffner. I moved my family and myself up here back in 2012. And before I decided to move up here, I did a lot of research about the quality of the community that I wanted to invest in. I discovered very quickly that this community of Niskayuna outweighed it by benefits. It was, it's really a great community. If you have not done your homework recently, take a look at how Niskayuna compares to other communities in New York State. I got the opportunity to move to the Northeast for a job in New York City. That's where I work. I decided to make that long trip because of the quality of life that this community would bring. It's important to recognize that when you have people saying that they've been here for 15, 20, 30, 50 years, it speaks volumes for the quality of life. I moved here because of three reasons. A great place to raise a family, a safe community, and a great school district. Those are the things that bring people into the community. And I challenge all of you to think about, how do we invest in the future of Niskayuna? And there's only one answer for that, in my opinion, is how do we attract people to live here? People don't come here because they want to open up a business. People don't come here because they want to establish their own company, organization. They come here because they want to live in a peaceful place. I do not know Mr. Harry. I've never used Mr. Harry. Excuse me. I have used Mr. Harry once, when I ran out of gas on my motorcycle many years ago. I don't know him, but I think today's event is not to question his character. It's not to question why he has this business. It's to question, how does this impact the quality of life? How does this impact the character of this community? But I also ask you to think about, for the future, what does this do? What is the precedent? How does this impact moving forward? I've not been happy the last few years living here. I'll be very honest. I've seen things change in ways that just makes it more, it brings just a sour taste to this topic for me. So I hope you will do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else present wishing to speak at privilege of the floor? Okay, it'll be last call for anyone present. Laura, do we have anyone online?
We do not have anyone online. I did want to recognize that 12 letters were forwarded to the board, and we received 38 postcards in opposition.
Those will be included with comments that'll be captured in the... Those will be included with comments that'll be captured in the meeting minutes. Okay, last call for open privilege of the floor.
Mr. Chairman, it's Jeff Palumbo, I'm the attorney for Mr. Kingra. Is now the time for me to make some comments?
No, you're a discussion item.
Very good.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're going to close privilege of the floor. There is no unfinished business, so we'll move on to new business. The first up is discussion items. First up is 1430 Balltown Road. This is the Niskiuna Central School District Office Building. It's a planning board review for signage for Resolution 2024-03.
Good evening. I'm Adam Walkleinkle from Adirondack Sign Company, representing the Niskiuna School District. We're proposing three signs, a freestanding sign, a building sign facing Balltown Road, and another at the main entrance facing the hardware store. I believe the one facing the hardware store is in compliance, and I think the ones that we need for a variance are the two, the building sign and the freestanding sign.
Correct. The project lead is Ms. Gold, so I'm going to turn it over to her.
Okay. As stated, two of the signs would need waiver to go in as proposed. I'm sorry, my voice is going again. I think the facade sign is maybe the easier one for me to deal with, and I don't know what other people think, but to me, it's far enough from the road that it maybe needs to be a little bit more present because you're not, it's not that close to the road. It is the logo, that's what they're using. I think I could drive by here and still not notice it.
So you're saying you would like to see the logo with Niskiuna School District either below it or beside it?
No, I'm not.
Okay.
I'm saying, this is, to me, this is within reason. I don't know how other board members feel about it, but it's the logo and it's what we're pretty much used to seeing. I have a bigger problem with the monument sign.
Okay.
And again, that may be me, but I don't know why you need anything more than an entrance sign there. So perhaps you could explain that.
The monument sign is the same for all the ones we had just done. The only one we didn't do, I believe, is the high school. Other than that, every Niskiuna school, the middle school and all elementary schools have this identical sign just stating that it is, you know, each elementary building. So this makes everything, it just kind of ties it all together. So when you go by, it's the school district's main office. It's the same size, same construction. It's, I believe, even the same, almost the same size as the neighbor's sign, the Ace Hardware sign, that is a freestanding sign as well.
I think something simpler and smaller would suffice. Don't know how the board members feel about it.
It's a consistent design, that's what you're saying, right? It's a consistent design across all the school buildings across the district.
Exactly. It's part of the branding. They're all the same.
And are any additional monument signs of that style? I know you said, because the high school already has an existing monument sign with the electronic messaging. Are there any others that are, that we're not aware of that would be added transportation or any other locations at this time that are being planned?
No.
And it's the same dimensions, correct? It appears to be, but I just want to confirm.
It is the same dimensions, yes.
However, this is not a school, and nor is it school property.
Which might argue the need for the sign, to some extent. Which might argue the need for the sign, because I do agree with you, it's not a school. I was thinking the same thing, but then I thought, that may be the reason why. They need to have something that's similar to what people are looking for.
Well, I'm thinking that facade sign is a fairly good clue. Finding the entrance, yeah, you need like a directional sign. And CSD entrance would be it for me.
Well, and isn't the facade sign not allowed because of the acreage, which is why it would require a waiver?
The monument sign.
The monument sign, right? The freestanding sign, right? So is there a specific hardship that would require the monument sign to justify the waiver other than being consistent with the other?
Consistent with the other ones, it needs, it needs to be consistent with the other ones. For my experience, it's, I think.
Does it need to be consistent with the other ones?
That's true.
You want it consistent. I'm not sure that's a need.
I think it's going to help people find the entrance. I think the entrance to this building's a little tricky, it's on the side, some of the buildings back there are a little confusing. I think it's, I think it's a good idea.
Could the applicant speak to, because I don't know what's going to, if it's going into that new space as the district office. I'm assuming that's where the school board will meet and other committee meetings. I wonder if you can just speak to the usage a little bit.
Sure. Good evening. My name's Matt Leonis, Assistant Superintendent of Business and Operations for the School District. First, just want to thank this board for their consideration and review of the plan when it first came before you many months ago. We are getting close to occupancy, and we're excited about that. One of the main reasons that we're excited about that is because the space that we're vacating in Van Antwerp Middle School will be renovated for our students, which is the most exciting part. But as we've kind of been discussing, you know, we're excited to be having our administrative offices on Balltown Road, right near the center of town there, and we think it will be helpful, just given the mix of what's happening there, for people to have some real visual presence of the school district, similar to what people are used to seeing around the school district. In terms of what will be there, that's correct. It will be the home of our school board meetings, the superintendent's office, office of instruction, business office, human resources office, and registrar's office, human resources office, and the registrar. I kind of note because it's people that we're welcoming to our school district as we work to hire people and bring people into the district as well as new families. So we certainly think that, you know, having some real visual presence there akin to what people see around the community, and in keeping with some of the other signs in that neighborhood will be helpful for us in just wayfinding, as well as just having that visual presence for the school district.
Are you saying that the school board meetings to which the public is invited will be held in this building?
Yes.
You had previously indicated otherwise, I believe, because you said the largest conference room was just yea big.
I believe the plan that was forwarded to and that the committee reviewed had a large board-style conference room. It's just a little bit larger than our current boardroom. That's been part of the plan all along.
That's fine.
Yeah, but larger meetings with the public have normally been held in an auditorium, not in the boardroom.
Yes, that's correct. I'm sorry. We, our typical.
Continuing, correct?
Yes, our typical board meetings are held in a conference room, a boardroom at Van Antwerp Middle School where our offices are now. When we anticipate a large crowd, or if we have an event where we're asking, you know, for example, the prom information night where we know several hundred or a few hundred families, we do hold those in an auditorium or the little theater at the high school, and that's not changing.
And that will change.
Yes, that will not change, yes, that's correct.
No, I'm more concerned that it is the first stop for new families, correct, before they find their school?
Yes.
Can you speak to the logo sign that's, it's a, it would be affixed to the brick, is that correct?
Yes.
And the dimensions of that are based on what? Because I know that's also requiring a variance right now due to size, the logo version.
Size, visibility, it's the Niskiuna logo. We felt it was fitting for the visual.
And can you, I know it's on there, but just remind me, the, will it be, what does it consist of, that signage, in terms of the material and how it's affixed?
It's a three-quarter inch thick.
Can you step up to the microphone so you're?
Yeah, I'm sorry. It's a three-quarter inch thick PVC board that we use. It's very similar to what you would find at Curtis Lumber called Clearboard. It's something that doesn't rot, doesn't split. We paint it, we put graphics on it, and we put it up. It holds up excellent in the weather.
It's externally lit?
It is not lit at all.
Oh, it's not lit at all?
Not at all. It is just a dimensional aspect that goes on the brick, no different than the address numbers that are on the building.
But the pieces flat affixed to the brick as opposed to where there's like a, you know, like a structure that provides like space, it's not away from the building?
No, it's flush up against the brick.
Okay.
What we do is we put these pads on the back with aluminum studs that are bonded to it, and then we drill into the bricks.
Straight into the.
silicone, and it's stuck right to it.
And Laura, just to clarify, I think I asked this last time, that the variance granted to, should the variance be granted to this sign stays with the building, it doesn't end, should the district vacate the location, that building retains the ability to have the facade sign of that size consistently going forward?
Yeah, I think actually the facade sign is more of a logo issue. The logo's taking most of it up. The facade sign is not too big. It's a logo issue. The monument sign is supposed to have five acres.
Yeah, just to add a little more detail, the facade sign in the Town Center Overlay District, the logo portion of the sign can only be 30% of the sign area. This is 100% of the sign area, which has happened on other signs when the logo is a sign.
Right, and that's going to be irrelevant of whatever that dimension comes down to be, it's always going to be 100%.
And the other thing to consider is that the logo actually has the name, so.
Yeah.
It's not like just putting the name and then having a great big logo on top of it. It's, yeah, actually reversed.
Something that is a challenge beyond this for our graphic folks that we work with is that, once you put the logo on, you've already kind of got the lettering, so there's not really anything else.
Right. Sorry, I have kind of a silly question. It just occurred to me, so the facade logo is big, but why do you need that if you have that monument sign? To me, it kind of seems redundant to have monument sign, the monument sign's good size. So why do we really need to have, can they legitimately have, they can have a facade logo, yes? It's just bigger than it's supposed to be.
They could have a sign like this, Niskiuna Central School District, face Balltown Road without a waiver. And they could have the one facing the internal way.
Okay.
So they would be allowed to have this, this one, facing Balltown Road, no problem.
But the logo on the building itself.
So the reason that that needs a variance is because our code says that a sign can only be 30% logo, and this is 100% logo.
Yeah, it, well, it just seems big to me.
Yeah, it's the size, it's not an issue, though.
Just to bring it back to the code again on that, the code allows one facade sign for each, each front, fronting a street. So Balltown Road is allowed a facade sign for fronting Balltown Road, and the side facade facing the driveway or private street is allowed a facade sign because they're both fronts.
Thank you.
And this issue is solely because it's the logo being so large.
So if you bring up the, if you bring up the elevation, it's got the numbers, okay, zoom in on the one in yellow. So I don't mind, I don't mind the logo, I think it's, it's nice that it's there, it's good to see it, and it's great that you can see the building numbers because you can drive all over the place and it's hard to see them, but it seems imbalanced. And there's a lot of growth that's down at that corner, especially in the summertime when that mature growth gets in and there's been some more plantings there. Maybe there's a consideration to move that logo up, you know, to the right of the numbers so that it's, it'll still be visible, it's a little bit higher. If you look at the way Ace's, their small signs that are lit up are higher. So, you know, as you come up Balltown, there is an elevation change there, and you've got the berm now with some of that landscaping, that's going to grow a little bit taller. I don't know if that eventually will be covered up a little bit, so maybe there's some consideration to relocating the logo, maybe it gets a little bit smaller. And as far as the monument sign, there's been a precedent with some of the businesses that we have on Balltown Road, as long as it's, you know, stays at a consistent sign, the placement, I think, is, is good. It's not congested or cramping another, another business. I'm not opposed to the monument sign.
The sign here facing Balltown Road, you worried about the vegetation growing up. All of that has been removed. If we driven by it, it's pretty clean, and I believe the plan, correct me if I'm wrong, is to keep it clean like that. I think if we put it up by 1430, up on that part of the facade, I think it'll look a little odd. Separating it from the building number is kind of typically what we do on a sign. If you do see like a monument sign, for example, and it's got the address on it, it's in a distinct, separate spot. It's either way up on top of the header, or it's down below, it's not next to it. The sign facing Balltown Road is nice to identify the building that that's what it is. This entrance on the side street identifies where you go into the building for the general color. There is other entrances, but that's for staff and whatever. But it's nice to be able to recognize it, know that this is the building when you're pulling, because when you walk that street, if I'm, if I'm correct, that's a road to other places, not necessarily just this one. So it's nice to identify this building from the road, and it's, again, part of their branding, it's just the logo.
But I don't believe that that Niskiuna logo is on any of the schools in that size configuration, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So the monument sign is consistent across the buildings, and they're great, they are such a marked improvement, but no school has an existing logo of that magnitude on the building, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I think, I think that the logo, I think to your point that you sort of, a couple people brought up, it almost doesn't need to be there because there's such a strong monument sign, so I think they're allowed to have it, but I.
I'm arguing the reverse.
Okay, but I think that, I agree, I think the size of the logo sign, as a marketing person, I appreciate the branding, but I do think it's, the size is large, given the space and the proximity to the monument sign and the usage of the building.
And I'm looking at it differently because I think it's people who drive by, okay, there's the building, how do I get in? And they're going to go up, and they're going to want to know where that entrance is. I don't think you need that whole monument sign to do that. I think you could do a very simple entrance and CSD, and that would accomplish it. And I don't believe Ace has a very big monument sign.
Ace has a monument.
Ace has a monument sign and Kinder Care has a monument sign, and they're both smaller than five acres. I, I agree with David. I think that because adjacent properties have monument signs, this one isn't too close to any of the other ones. I think they're actually requesting to set it farther back. And, yeah, my daughter went to Glencliff, and now she's going to Iroquois, and I really appreciated the new monument signs. I find it hard to know when to turn for Iroquois on Rosendale, and so I look for the monument sign to slow down.
I just question absent of a hardship, does this board have the waiver authority to grant that, or is it a variance requirement?
No, we have a waiver.
No, I know, but the waiver authority is specific to having a hardship by the applicant and granting only the minimum necessary to satisfy hardship.
Yeah, we have that authority.
Right, but what's the hardship, and is this the minimum required? To Leslie's point, it could just be a, here's the entrance.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's a lot that goes into it, and obviously, I think looking at what's been done on the corridor is important before that, and I think that when we have looked at monument signs on Balltown Road before, the entrances and exits out of these buildings are confusing. That's why Ace Harbor has a sign, that's why Kinder Care has a sign. So when we're looking at it, it's really just kind of wayfinding and traffic finding. That's just how I look at it. Obviously, board members can differ on their opinions, but we're also thinking about like our Town Center Overlay District, and how you're entering into the town and how you're getting to these buildings is an important factor.
Okay, so a couple differing opinions here on where we're at, and I think at the minimum, you can get one facade sign. And I think at the minimum, you can get one facade sign up on the marquee, which is on the entrance. And that's not gonna inhibit you from doing anything, at least for the foreseeable future. But if you wanna take some of these comments and talk internally, we can have this come back. I know Leslie's a project lead, I think she wants to make a recommendation for resolution, we can talk about that as well.
A question on the facade sign facing Balltown. Why didn't you center that underneath the address?
Why didn't we?
Yeah.
Um, we can do that, I, I don't have any issue with that, Matt, do you have any issue with that?
No.
So a place where I'd be parked for a future, on the two signs considering waivers is, I'm okay with that facade sign facing Balltown Road, I think this should be a little more aesthetically centered under the address and maybe smaller reduction in size. It's still gonna need a waiver even if you made it an inch, right, because it's a hundred percent, it's logo.
Yeah.
But I do think that your actual monument sign needs to be more directing traffic focused than matching the school, than matching the school buildings. I think it needs probably come into the size conformance with the other signs that we have there in terms of Ace and Kindercare. And basically serve the purpose of directing the public, it'll be frequently using this place, to where they need to drive up and go park.
Kindercare is about, it's, it's less than half the size of the Ace one, Ace one is fair as far as, do you not think you know what size Ace one is? I'm almost positive that Ace one is really close in size to what we're.
Right, so, so remember, I said size, but the key issue we're dealing with there is that the acreage of the property doesn't even allow it. So something commensurate, doesn't have to be exact, but something that serves the purpose of directing the public, especially in night, when you're gonna have your board meetings, to know where to drive and where to go park for the central school district offices.
So Jengus, are you saying like directions on the monument sign? What do you mean by being more wayfinding in nature?
Yeah, so like an arrow to the left or right, an arrow up the road or something like that. As opposed to trying to match a consistency with school buildings. Just a consideration.
That would be the red placard on the bottom.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, um, thank you for the feedback, we'll, we'll talk it over and we'll be, we'll be back in front of you with.
Stuff to build a building outside your property.
Absolutely, yes. Okay, that's okay, we're excited to, to get in there, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is twenty-three thirty-nine Troy's Connected Road. This is a site plan application for a two thousand square foot addition requiring a variance from the Z B A. There is no project lead, so invite the applicant or representative to give a recap of the project.
Um, actually, before the applicant starts, because there's still some members of the audience, I will try and bring a timeline for people next meeting so that they understand. No action is being taken at this meeting. Um, the zoning board is the board that will be granting the variances. We are recommending to the zoning board to grant a variance. And then if a variance is granted on this project, it comes back to the planning board for a site plan review. What we're reviewing right now is the initial project and for a potential recommendation to the zoning board for an area variance. No action tonight, and you guys would get noticed of the zoning board. Uh, we're not even allowed to call for a public hearing until it goes to the zoning board. So we'll try and bring a timeline so we can like walk people through the steps. But I just, I felt like there was maybe some feeling like we would be taking action on something tonight, which we are not doing. Um, there's a lot of steps to a project like this.
Laura, I just want to thank you for bringing that clarity for folks who are, who need to be aware. I just wanna add, to reiterate, this matter, Mr. Kingra was denied his application. And that denial legally in New York triggers his ability and his right to go to the Z B A, the zoning board of appeals, which is a legal entity of a different set of faces than you see here today, a different set of faces from the town board. So pay attention to when that one comes up for a public hearing. Secondly, this board needs to hear the details of the site plan so that we can make a recommendation, which is a non-binding recommendation to the Z B A as to whether the usage is suitable for the area and the usage is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Each one of us votes as individuals on those two matters. And then a final recommendation based on those two votes is whether we think the zoning board of appeals should grant or not. It's completely non-binding, if you stick around for our next agenda topic, you'll see some of the, uh, some of the history play out and when we give non-binding recommendations to the Z B A and the Z B A does something different. So I just wanna make clear to the energy that was here in the audience when only two or three people showed up when we had to actually enact code for short-term rentals, since some of the public brought it up, right? This room was not this full when Niskuna enacted a code for short-term rentals. However, back to this case at hand, we're gonna listen to the site plan and we're gonna be able to make a recommendation to the Z B A based on those parameters you mentioned. So, thank you Laura, I'm sorry I felt like I had to make it a little clearer.
I think it's not something that people see every day, so I just wanna make sure you understand there are a fair number of meetings that come along with a project.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. Okay, and a representative from the applicant is online, correct?
Yes, Jeff Palumbo, I represent the petitioner. I'm sorry, but I got cut off right at the beginning of the discussion, but I did hear a little bit of it, so here, here's, here's my confusion. When I, when I look at the zoning ordinance, it talks about referral of certain appeals to the planning board. And this is one of the appeals that, to the zoning board of appeals that is sent to the planning board for a recommendation on the variance. Which means before you can do that, you have to have the variance application because that's what the ordinance says. You can't make a recommendation on the variance without the application. You have to have the application and all accompanying materials, um, and then give your recommendation within thirty days. I don't know any other way that this can happen other than that. That it, we file our application for the, the, um, variances, that application and all the materials that we submit with it, go to you, you make a recommendation on the variance. I don't know what that has to do with what I heard about the comprehensive plan and the site plan. That to me happens after the zoning board of appeals decides whether to grant the variance.
So the process at Niskuna has always been that when a site plan application is made, this board reviews the site plan and as part of that review makes a recommendation to the zoning board of appeals as to whether or not in their belief, the proposed, uh, plan is in conformance with our comprehensive plan, that recommendation is not binding.
I see you shaking your head.
Yeah, because it's, it's, yeah, I just don't understand how you can make any recommendation on a site plan that requires variances. Your recommendation, according to your own code, is for the variances themselves, not the site plan.
Mr. Palumbo, I wanna be very clear, we're not making a recommendation tonight. It's actually to the applicant's benefit to come to multiple planning board meetings before we make a recommendation to the zoning board. And we do allow for them to do that. Um, it's, it's, um, it's okay, but we don't make a recommendation, obviously, until it's scheduled for a zoning board meeting and those materials are before the board. The purpose of the meeting tonight is for the applicant to show the project to the board and it's for us to look at it. And that is very customary in the town of Niskuna.
And we've not held a public hearing or anything like that. Members of the public are free to speak during permission of the floor on any planning matter. There, there's no caveats to that.
I don't have any problem with any of that. My only concern is that the, the board is not making a recommendation, as Laura has said this evening, which is fine. You can't make a recommendation because you don't have the application yet.
Sure.
So, so, so why go into any detail about the site plan if the zoning board of appeals hasn't granted the variances?
Because there's at least one issue that transfers that both boards are concerned about. So the issue of whether or not it fits within the community and comports with the comprehensive plan is germane to both boards. So I agree with you that this board is never going to consider the financial information that your applicant will have to present to the zoning board of appeals. So we don't, this board doesn't need to see any of that financial information. But we're interested about whether or not it fits with the comprehensive plan.
Well, then there's a, there's also a question about that because I don't believe a use variance is required here, and I'd like to discuss that in more detail with the planning staff. But, um, that would be the only time that we would have to consider filing any financial information if we are asking for a use variance. We're asking for an area variance, which is, I believe, all we're asking for. There's no requirement that we submit financial documentation.
So we can deal with that as a zoning board issue. And so we've established that that's not this board's issue tonight. So if you'd like to address this board's concerns or make a presentation, we're happy to listen to it. And then separately, the town attorney or I will have a conversation with you and the town planner regarding the type of variance that might be required.
Yeah, uh, again, I, I, it's difficult for me to make a presentation on issues that I don't know that are necessarily germane to the issue. And I, I hear what you're saying about the comprehensive plan. But the issue for the variances does not involve the comprehensive plan. It's the benefit to the applicant versus the detriment to the health, safety and welfare of the neighborhood and then the five factors that go along with it. So I mean, I can talk and I can, and I can respond to each of the statements that were made tonight about crime and transient visitors and, uh, and, and traffic and all the other things that were talked about, but those aren't the issues. That's not the issue, the issue is the benefit versus the detriment. And the benefit here is that my client has gone from selling ninety thousand gallons of gas a month to thirty thousand gallons of gas a month. He needs to have an expansion in order to survive. I mean, that's really the bottom line with any business, you need to grow or you die. And in this particular case, you know, that's why we're looking for the extra bays. And, and all of the things that were said this evening on, by the supporters of the project are true. When this project is completed, it will be a better project than one exists now, given the fact that there will be more room to park the cars, there'll be room for more landscaping, parking will be more organized, all the things that go with it. And consequently, the, the detriment to the community in our mind, as we will demonstrate to the zoning board of appeals, is not there.
Okay, Mr. Palumbo, this is your opportunity to present this project. And that's what we're looking for tonight as our board. If you have other concerns, there, you can reach out to the planning department. If you would like to take this project and we can assign a project lead to it and you don't wanna present it, we can begin to vet this out, there's a number of meetings that we have to do. We do make a non-binding recommendation, so this is your opportunity tonight, if you're the representative, you can do the presentation. If there's somebody else here for Mr. Kingra that wants to do that, they can do that as well.
Uh, Brian, you there, you wanna get up and, and start? I, I can, I don't know what else could be said about it, but Brian, go ahead if you're there.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board, my name is Brian Sipperly with Verity Engineering. We're representing applicant as well, Mr. Kingra. Um, I don't know if Jeff had just left the call or not, but what, what I'll do for the benefit of this board is just talk a little bit about the site improvements. So just talk a little bit about the site plan, right, let all the discussions tonight you heard about the history be just that. So again, um, the elephant in the room tonight is the two thousand square foot proposed addition to a roughly thirteen hundred square foot existing gasoline service station. And yes, the math comes out to roughly a hundred fifty percent sound on paper. Um, in addition, you know, I, I think we heard a little bit about what is driving the need. So I think it's pretty clear that we want to communicate to the board that we're, we're not looking to be a Cumberland Farms competitor, a Stewart's competitor, or any one of these larger nationals that are coming into the area. It's not the right area for it and the applicant knows it. We won't get into this now, but the need for, right, there, there's multi-components to gasoline service stations, it's a service as well as the gasoline. As you heard, he's, has a hardship that is not this board's fault, but it's driving the applicant to expand the business in other ways where he needs to respond to his clients, and that's what the service. The site being built in nineteen, early nineteen fifties, more than likely predates the zoning. And what worked back in nineteen fifties and sixties does, does not work today, period, right? Harry's been trying to make it work, it's you all within the community that are visiting him to cause the, the stacking. And I think it's entirely very difficult for someone to say, I can't take your car today. At, at some point when there's no pavement left, that's probably when he'll turn away a client, but that's why we're here. We're here because his business needs to expand service. He's not looking to expand the canopies out front, one of these large acre and a half sites that we see now for the modern C store and gas concept that we're all used to, to visiting and that we, that we want. So the addition, as pointed out, is, is generally appended to the rear and to the east side of the building and will contain service space, and that's it. Uh, with the larger floor plan, in, in the current floor plan of thirteen hundred square feet or thereabouts, got two bays, I've been in there, I'm shimmying around to get in, his workers are doing the same. The point of sale area that we talk about chips in a soda, it's extremely small, right? Um, it's kinda outdated. And with the improvements, um, it's, it's all about service. But he's going to just slightly expand the C store, we're not gonna get into what zoning issues that may cause and just kind of talk to you about the broad brush goals of, of the applicant. And the gas canopy is a gas canopy and the, and the gas sales will just be the gas sales, he's simply responding to what that is. So that's what the site plan is, right? Now, now when we, when we do that, it's, it's difficult because we're looking at a use that's not defined in the zone. I don't have any zoning and setbacks to look for. I've got bits and pieces of this use in different zones, which we've tried to incorporate on this plan. So for example, um, I think what we wanna communicate is whether I use gasoline service station setbacks on the C eight zone or whether I use a close one acre commercial development in the R one. The plan doesn't change in intensity. None of the setbacks are gonna change, the, the plan for the development is right where it's shown. Um, just because the applicant is under control of some adjacent lots, we are not merging those, causing a larger denominator for the lot area and asking for more site density. Strictly about the expansion of the service component. Now, when Harry came to our office and wanted to do that, we said, well, we just can't draw you the box and make the rest of the site as non-compliant as it is today. So part of the other site improvements are in an attempt to improve the site with limits, okay? This is a gasoline state, service station, I don't think the applicant is looking to go into a full-blown redevelopment over an acre and really cause the development at the site to, to look different. So some of the improvements that are also shown on the plan are parking and access. So we are proposing to leave the remaining curb cuts on Troy's Connected and Anadaga alone as it relates to just trying to touch areas of the site commensurate to what the applicant wants. So gasoline service station has a parking requirement. This facility did not meet it, does not meet it today. I don't know where there are two stripe spaces, there are one stripe space, it is a striped handicap ADA space, and it is also non-compliant. So we can't leave the rest of the site alone, so part of what's shown here on the site plan is to bring other areas of the site into some conformance that would make sense with a typical redevelopment project such as this. Um, and, and that's really it, so we're under an acre, we are providing the required amount of parking. The parking code calls for three spaces per every service bay, so that's gonna take into account one in the bay and from what I understand, two, two inventory per bay, right? So that's kind of the business owner's guidelines into, you know, stacking the site. So he needs to improve that and find a place for those. I think we all know that the cars are parked sporadically on the site, he's trying to deal with it, he has no area, he has no hardscaping to put those cars. This is a get well plan. It's a get well plan, and I, and I get we're facing the uphill battle on the ten percent in the uses, but this is the get well plan. The retaining wall was, as noted in the, uh, project files, that was commensurate another open building permit. And, um, we've shown that wall across the back and its current approximate location and it's, uh, it's been constructed now. Um, so it, it just so happens to be that where, where that wall is was gonna help us try to, we weren't gonna demolish the wall you just put up, looking at try to have circumnavigation of the site and to try to put the parking in the logical area. Uh, while, to, to be honest with you all and members of the public and especially the neighbors, trying to really respect the buffers that are there today and only, uh, put the required elements of the plan where, where they can be. Um, and, and there's really not much going on with the site of, of, of complexity, we are not changing access onto Route, uh, Route seven, we are not providing new utility connections, no sewer, no water connection changes, no electrical service connections. Um, so we really aren't doing too much besides the back. Um, so I, I'll leave it at there at, at this point, Chairman, and then, and bring it to, back to the board for any questions that we may help answer at this initial meeting. Um, but, but that's just it, and, and I think we would also argue that two additional service bays and we'll. Um, but, but that's just it, and, and I think we would also argue that two additional service bays, and we'll back this up with some, some information. But, um, these aren't traffic generators. This is not a new use at a new location as a new traffic generator. The background traffic on Troy's Connected Road is 25,000 cars a day. We will submit information further on in this process to help objectify some of the concerns about traffic, but I just want the board to keep that in mind. So again, it's a service bay addition keyed onto the back of the building. Uh, just, just to clarify, there's, am I going to walk up here? There's been talk about one, two, three bays. One, two, three, this is going to be a service. Okay, you can drive through this. Somebody said one bay, somebody said two. There will be a total of four bays. One is completed and it'll be laid out in such a way. So again, improving safety of his workers, improving the ability to have tools of what we call the modern keepout, right? And, and any one of these, uh, automotive service stations today, we're at least looking at a 12 by 25 area with lifts, toolbox and, and buffers around this, it, it is, they're making it work, but they're just looking to come into some, um, more modern times with the asset itself. And, 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 and along with these improvements would be a facade improvement, right? So he wants to match the character, work with the board, the architectural committee. Those are minor changes that I think we can all negotiate on if the project is able to, and afforded the opportunity to continue to move forward in discussions. Um, but I just wanted to communicate that, that we're not just adding to the back. We want to make sure that the rest of the site kind of comes up, and it is a chance to improve the site. New pavement, new striping, lighting, there'll be no light pollution. We use photometrics and we don't bleed plastic property lines. So I just urge you to, you know, we, we'll, we'll stay objective, uh, objective with, with the information that we present. Um, and we're more than open to having discussions about any safety measures or any other site plan changes that, that the applicant consider that may be a, a benefit, uh, to others involved as well. Turn it back over to you.
Okay, thank you. So recap some of the items that were talked about earlier. Uh, obviously, one of the things is 10% footprint increase. So one of the things we've asked previous applicants to do is to show a plan that would show what the maximum expansion could be based on what's permitted. And that's helpful for a couple of reasons. One, it would show maybe the hardship that you're showing here, that you can't do anything with what's available. Um, we'd have to see that, so that's something that we would like to recommend that you do. I think that's always, it's consistent with some of the projects that we've had previously. The other thing is, have you, have you read parts of the comprehensive plan that referred to Route seven and some of the neighborhoods? If, if you have not.
I have, yeah.
Okay, um, so, you know, this project has been in front of this board prior, and there was a previous plan that was part of our, our package that we included with that that, um, shows that this, you know, this parcel's been looked at in a couple of different, you know, perspectives of what it would be for future expansion.
Right, okay. Can, can you go back to the first one?
Sure.
The 10%, right, and this was about 130 square feet.
Right.
You'd like to see how that 130 foot would be laid out and how it would benefit him?
Correct. If you took, if you took your existing floor plan, there's a sketch, uh, I think, um, Bergeron did. He's, um, the PE.
The, the floor plan?
Yeah, the floor plan and the elevation. So if you take, yeah, Laura, can you go to that next, the next slide down? It's the, it's the floor plan's the one that shows the existing and the new? Correct. So the, the floor plan to the bottom is the existing floor plan currently that shows the two bays, uh, retail area, bathrooms and admin space. So if you, if you built off that and show us what 10% looks like. So if the, if the intention is to try to get a third bay in or reconfigure, or maybe the 10% is dedicated to retail space, that's what we'd like to see.
Yep. Gotcha. In, in this case, I wanted to clarify, 130 square feet doesn't buy us much, but we'll show you what that does. I just wanted to make sure that was the goal.
Yeah, so on that note, and I was looking for these numbers in the write-up and I didn't find it. So maybe if you know it, you can inform us. One of the denial topics has to do with two uses being on this site. There's a retail use and there's a service station use. So right now, as you go from the lower existing floor plan to the upper one, including the bays, what are the percentages of those two uses that increased? Okay, does the question make sense?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Noted, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, do you have that number now?
Oh, I'm sorry, I do not have the individual, so the C store is this, it's going to that, the service bay was X, it's going to Y. I do not have the optic up. I've noted it and we'll bring it back.
Okay, and if I could just finish, there's, there's two questions like that, can I? From the way it looks right now, so you have two bays on the lower existing floor plan, but on the upper one, those two bays become a single bay? What, I'm having a hard time. You're clearly adding a hole.
So if I can walk up.
That's okay.
So this is going to be the old wall.
Okay.
The colony side of the building today. This is the extension.
Right.
So there are two bays in here, it's going to keep one and add one more. So it's going to be two in the front and, and the rest of the area gets dedicated back towards internal.
Right, so the key thing you said, to make sure I say it back to you correctly, what is today two bays will actually become one bay, and you're actually adding three additional bays.
Correct, and I'll get square footage as a percentage.
Right, understood, I'm, I'm just still working on the count right now.
Yep.
Okay, um, you're going to keep the wall that's there, and the two bays is going to become one, the most, uh, the most eastern wall? Or is that all going to get demolished?
It's a building related question, I can get an answer for that. We're, we're site guys, but I'll have to ask Mark what, what's intention on keying into that wall.
Yeah, and so I'm going to log a question here. If this were to go forward, what is the extent of demolition that's going to happen on the, on the building to get to the configuration that you're displaying?
It's a great question. Um, it, it, from, from the way it looks on the floor plan, I'll confirm with Mark, it looks like he's keeping some exterior, external walls and keying on, right? He shows the windows.
I mean, the key thing is that that northern, that eastern wall becomes actually an, an internal wall, right?
So you've got, you've got things today that exist on the external wall that it looks like he's keeping. This is a high-level rough plan that Mark's put together. And Harry, you, you know more from programming with Mark than. Yeah, I didn't think there was, I just, I, I don't want to speak for Mark on.
Yeah, we got it. It's, it's better if you guys are near the microphone because it'll capture it for the audio.
So the exterior, the exterior walls that are there now, they're going to become interior walls, they are supporting walls, they will remain the same. We're not going to create a lot of demolition, a lot of dust and a lot of debris.
Okay, all right, I was just asking the question to the level of which I asked it. All right, um, your property is on a slab there, right? You have no basement? How about your, um, your lifts, right?
They have the slab.
Slab? Okay, so there's no track where someone can walk under the lift? Okay, um, last question.
There is, you mean, and like basements, like in instant block?
Yeah.
No, there's no basement that people can walk in.
Okay.
There's a surface walking on me.
All right, last question, and then I'll stop for a little bit and maybe get some more. The retaining wall, how old is that?
Uh, it's fairly.
Why would, why did you install it? What, what was the purpose for installing the retaining wall?
Uh, what was the purpose? Because it was dangerous, Laura came out and saw the danger of people that would drive off. The elevation change was huge.
Should I have something that happened underneath the building permit, Laura?
Yeah, a valid building permit was issued for the retaining wall.
Okay, and so the issue with the building we were installing was potential danger to?
Um, we didn't make a classification of danger, but people are allowed to shore up existing changes on their property. Um.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you.
What was happening was a lot of erosion, erosion was happening because the water was coming down on the rains and stuff.
Can you just get closer to the microphone? Thank you.
So there was a lot of erosion happening when it would rain and the water would run off and wash away the, actually the tree roots were getting loose. So that's why it was done. Laura and your assistant or engineer came up, Laura, and inspected the site.
Yeah, I mean, we did a pre-site inspection to issuing the building permit.
Yeah, so they were made aware of what was going on and showing them visibly what was the problem there.
Okay, thanks, I'm good for now.
I just want to clarify, because when, when Sir Sipperly spoke, the bays that are being added, they are in and out from those doors that are shown. When you said through, this is not going to be like a LIA where you drive, you can come all the way through. In other words, you're pulling a car in and backing it out of the space each bay. It's not a situation where you'd go in and be able to drive all the way around like an L.
No, can you talk into the microphone?
I, I think you can, sir.
New service component, you're not driving your vehicle through the back, you're getting out. Yes, the garage doors are facing opposite one another east-west. You know, what he does if there's no car in there, can he pull a car through versus back it out, shore? I think it's intended if all four bays are a, a full, then it's going to be an in, in and out with a reverse, forward and reverse. So when I say a through bay, you know, if there's no one in there, uh, they can pull the car forward, but that's the level of service thing and how he runs the inside of the building, not what patrons will do.
Right, just make it.
The dimension suggests it's two cars wide though, correct? Versus like a front bay where there, there's, I know they're tight right now, but there's only enough room for one vehicle. Go ahead, speak into the mic though, just so we've got you.
So we're talking about current day 2024 automotive centers. We have to have equipment in order to work on these vehicles. So those equipments are not carrying toolboxes like we saw in the 1960s and stuff like that. So now it's lockers of toolboxes. So even, we don't want to make it through, you said, don't have a drive-through, I can put my tools in between the. I can put my toolboxes here. This bay comes in and you work off there with the car here and work off, so you can have back-to-back toolboxes. And toolboxes are not, you know, uh, a dresser in your home, toolboxes.
I understand.
But due to that question, uh, Mr. Kingra, the toolboxes were probably expected to be on the north and south sides of that pass-through to bay versus in the middle.
If, if.
Is that why it's wider?
If it's an issue of driving through, I can remedy that by putting the toolboxes in the middle of that drive-through. So you don't have a drive-through.
I don't think anyone issued, I, I'm not sure if we had, we're, we were projecting an issue with the drive. We were projecting the square footage and understanding why the square footage and to your, uh, to the applicant's, uh, point, it's really there to, to, to be convenient for, for you, you could back in, back out, pass through. But I do want to add something.
It will be better as we pass through.
Yeah, I think that makes sense, and then you have your tools on the perimeter.
Yeah, so, so maybe I could speak to what's our precedence as a board, what's my precedence personally, and someone can, right? When we make that recommendation to the zoning board of appeals, the discussion that your lawyer didn't want us to have, we try to actually minimize the variances that you might be asking for. Because that tends to actually make it a little bit better relative to everything. Makes sense, right? Variance is a thing that could cause you the issue. We try to work with the applicant to minimize the variances, right? That's our MO. Okay, so I think Chris said it, right? I know in my questions, I'm not identifying issues. I'm asking questions about dimensions, about, do you really need it to be 21 feet? Right, do you really need to actually have the ability to stack three cars in there? Or can you get away with something smaller for toolboxes and one lane of cars that just backs in and backs out? Just, I'm just saying.
Would it help if we came with a more detailed floor plan, space programming next time? I mean, I, I think that this is a high level, but the reality is the space is programmed out for, for the user. And maybe if we're able to bring that so you can understand, this is our 12 by 25, this is our key. This is a design standard that if Jiffy Lube was going to come in and look for space, is how they plan it from the ground up. Does that help?
I think that's useful for both boards.
Excellent.
Yeah, so.
Rather than having to narrate, I think that's.
Good, I'm, I'm glad it was a suggestion from you and it's not something we have to tell you.
I recognize it, that's, I, so we just take it, I think they'll do it.
And I'm looking at it, I am looking at it as a, as a traffic issue as well, because I think the, the movement of cars has been, you know, discussed today, and I was on zoning when we looked at Stewart's and they wanted to build a drive-through at the corner of not in Balltown and thinking about the traffic pattern. So that's why I'm, I am interested in whether we're going to start to see a circular pattern of vehicles coming in and through. Because it does change the entrance and exit of the property.
So can you, Laura, can you jump back to the site plan quickly, please? Uh, it's a great comment. So circulation is, is more for level of service and safety of, of you as a consumer of the site, right? To be able to pull in, drive around a site 24 feet, drive lane, which is a standard drive lane, um, for, for two, for two directional traffic. Um, so, you know, we're not proposing a directional, uh, route to the site in terms of users pulling in and having to go clockwise or counterclockwise. Um, so when, when you say drive-through, I just want to understand, looking at the site plan, what the concern, what yours is.
Just that there may be, you know, where LIA, where you're coming in the front and going straight to the back, this appears that you can come all the way around, which is not, which is very different than pulling your car in and backing it out. And I understand what you're saying, but our job, right, is to address all the concerns, um, relevant to this. And so my concern was, does that change the traffic pattern on the property significantly?
Oh, oh, so, so I think it's important, and maybe I don't need to say this, but Harry and his employees are the only ones pulling cars in and out. Should be, right, in general. When you're at LIA, you, you pull in and get out and you go back, you never pull forward, it's only employee base that.
Right, no, I understand. It's, it's more about where cars are going to be coming and going out of the service base that I'm concerned about.
Correct, so, so that's a, that's a very, very valid question. And today, what we have is probably a mess where the two bays come in and out and they conflict with, I've seen it. They conflict with people going to the NPDs or the gas pumps. And it, it works, although from ground up, you wouldn't design a conflict from the start like that.
Thank you.
I picked up on the video.
Okay, so as we sit right now, it is a danger point, because when we're pulling cars out of the first bay, cars come up to the gas station and we have had fender benders there where I would end up paying out of my insurance to fix these vehicles. So when a gas, you pull up into my gas station, I'm pulling out of my bay, reversing, there is not enough room to maneuver anything. So that's why, that's one of the reasons why we want to move it this way, so we have a little bit more room to do that.
That, that brings up, I mean, the, the heart of all of this, first of all, I want to commend you on the feedback from the community to, to have compliments on you personally, as well as, as a man is pretty impressive. And I definitely feel good being a member, knowing that there are people like you, you know, in, in the organization or in the community, um, you know, contributing to the community. Um, what, what I'm having a difficult time with is that, that comprehensive plan and the 10%, and the arguments were very well articulated by other community members, members, that the impact on this well-defined comprehensive plan made up by many professionals and, uh, community members and has been tried and true, is going to be really compelling to us when we're making a decision for 150% expansion. So your point about the fender benders, um, I don't usually have this sound issue, um, is, it's parallel to the fact that you're oversized for its use, right?
Oversized.
Yeah, meaning that you've got more traffic, more traffic on the site than was intended to have, and that people are pulling out, getting gas and running into each other.
No, 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 no.
Explain what you said about the fender benders.
What I'm explaining is.
Right, today.
Hold on, hold on, Harry.
Or just, just.
There will be people watching this and they will not be able to hear you.
If you can put up the other. Yeah. Okay, can you put the other, the origi, the floor plan, please? The old building, if you can raise it right there. So what's happening is, in comparison to this bay right here, okay? The gas tanks are, uh, the fuel dispensers are right here. So when somebody pulls in, not at a high speed, just pulling in to get gas and park at a dispenser, we could be pulling out.
Right.
So it is too congestive right there, the way it is. So that's why I am trying to eliminate this and move it here, so we do not have that congestion right here. Has nothing to, about people pulling in, hitting each other, it's just this issue right here. The way it was designed, maybe it was a setback or something, I don't know, but it was a horrible design.
I understand, I'm just reflecting that it, it's been there for a very long time and was functional. We are definitely pushing the limits, and I understand why, you know, you've had a great deal of success and, and we, we, we def. I, as a board member, like to find, find any way we can to promote, you know, business. I'm a businessman myself. Uh, I especially like it when it's, um, complimentary to the need, you know, and it's local. But the 10%, so I just wanted to make the comment that Chairman made earlier, which is, if you're going to give us a, a plan that shows a 10% increase. if you're going to give us a plan that shows a 10% increase, which is what the comprehensive plan and the code, which is what we don't have for Airbnbs, right? When we don't have a code, things happen we don't want to have. And when we have a code, it's there for a reason. If you show the 10%, I would encourage, don't lose sight of the fact that you need more parking. I would still want to see all that parking and the flow and all the other things that people talked about. Let's eliminate the problem of parking on the street, even though it's fair game. Let's solve that issue. You've got a lot of customers in waiting. That's great. But keep the parking. Let's just address the 10%. And then I'm having trouble with the two uses also. And I know it makes sense. It's convenient for people who are waiting especially, but can you optimize that other space to give you more bays and less convenience store? So that was just my addition to what the chairman was saying. When we're doing the 10% plan, I would like to see a response to the community's concern with parking and flow and making it safe in that plan, but also give you that extra bay.
Okay, so I want to give other board members an opportunity to speak.
Yeah, one simple question. I'd like to know the number of current employees and the anticipated number if you get approval on this design.
If we get approval, so what happens in automotive services? What happens in automotive services that we bring a vehicle in, we raise it up, we check it out, and then we find out what's wrong with it. We get the approval on the job. You might not call me back right away. We're working on another vehicle at the same time. We're not working on it outside. We're working on it inside with a new proposal. When you call us back, we, okay, approve the job, we order the parts, we start tearing the vehicle apart. So raising employees, we might have to get one more employee extra, okay? To take up the work that's not sitting outside, that is inside at this moment. So you're staggering your jobs. It's not like you're working on one job and then I can't sit on a stool and just watch the clock go by and I'm waiting for parts. You're actually working on another car and diagnosing that one to proceed working on that one. And when you get called back by one of the customers, you jump back to that car and start working on that. This will eliminate a lot of the jobs that we're doing outside right now.
Yeah, so I'm sorry, Harry. What are those counts? You expect them to be the current count and the new count?
What's that? Cars or?
Employees.
Employees. We have myself and two other employees right now in the repair shop. We might add one or two at the most.
Okay.
And it most likely be one.
Would the hours of operation change at all?
The hours of operations have dwindled at my own, you know, lifestyle. But if we can expand it, right now it is seven to six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
It used to be six to 11 o'clock. So there's a big difference that I have adjusted for. And what I see it as, if I can come to some agreement with the concerns of the neighbors, I do understand their concerns. I think we can come to a decent understanding where we can give and take. And at the end of the day, we want a better facility there. It is not going away. It is what it is. It is what it is. So do we want to see that? Or do we want to make some improvement and come to the table and have a discussion? That's what it comes down to. If they want to have a discussion, then we can, I can adjust, they can adjust, and we can come to an agreement and make this happen and have a better corner. Because it's not getting better the way it is.
Okay. I want to thank you for the presentation. So what we're going to do is I'm going to wrap this up now for this project, just a discussion item at this point.
I'm sorry. I just actually have a question for Laura.
Okay. Oh, you got it back?
Okay. Could we actually, if you have ability to pull Laura, what the actual non-conformance was? And so let me tell you where I'm going with this. So at the highest level, I see actually three uses on this property. I see gasoline, I see retail, and I see a service station, right, automobile service. So I'd like to understand what that original non-conformance was for. Does that question make sense?
Yeah, I mean, I think it is a little fair to say that this doesn't, it isn't captured perfectly in any of our uses. But generally speaking, the closest thing that is available when we're doing research on what used to be there is the gasoline service station. We are not able to find anything in our records approving actually a point-of-sale or convenience store on the property. We did a really thorough research.
How about something approved and repaired?
No, actually, a gasoline service station includes repair.
Okay, so that's what I wanted to make sure. So that's what it's for.
Yeah.
So there's just two uses.
Yeah, so yeah, the gas pumps and the service station are actually incorporated into one use. The gasoline service station is defined as a gasoline pump with service bays. The thing that was hard for us is that although there may be things that are sold in that store, we find no approvals for any type of convenience store.
Understood on that one. Yeah, I was going, you answered the question. Thank you.
I will point out that it doesn't, it leaves your imagination on the gasoline service station on how somebody exchanges goods and services. Where is that done, right? There is, there has to be a point of sale. There's probably always been a point of sale. But gasoline service station doesn't necessarily point out, or doesn't specifically state that the C-store is a different use, it's not accessory to normal and customary or incidental to. Again, I think I tried to point out, we do not want to be Stewart's, right? We're not looking to create a situation where I get you to buy my commodity called gas because I've got a bigger, brighter store that offers better coffee. It's not how he's growing his business, right? The C-store is just, I'll be honest with you, this is, don't think this is throwing away. It's antiquated, right? I'm not going to get milk there. I have to choose somewhere else. I'm not. Maybe if they've got a 12-ounce soda that I want on the way, it's about all they offer. And maybe we can bring some more color to that, but it's just a bigger C-store, right? Slightly bigger, slightly more offerings, something bigger than there is today, maybe with some chairs. But I think that's maybe more defined than what you want to do.
That's not going to be the driving business for me. Driving business is my repairs. At the end of the day. When your sales go from 100,000 gallons a month down to 30, I don't know where that traffic has gone. Maybe it's still, cars are still coming in, but they're not filling up at Harry Service Center. So I went from 100,000 gallons to 30,000 gallons. You tell me where that 70,000 gallons that I was selling, where those cars have gone. They're not coming to Harry Service Center.
So I just, I'm just politely disagreeing with that a little bit. The definition for gasoline service station, I pulled it up. It's specific to the sale of gasoline and other motor vehicle fuel, together with oil and other lubricating substances, the sale of motor vehicle accessories, lubricating, washing, and other servicing and repair of motor vehicles. It's, it is specific about how sales are transacted. And one of the things that we've seen in the file is actually, you know, the planning department in the town policing this fairly strictly and not allowing like the sale of milk or eggs in that store and stuff like that. No, I know. But I mean, we've actually enforced that before. So I'm just saying, there is, yeah, I don't know if you were the owner or not. Yeah, I'm not sure about that. I just, I'm looking in the file.
They're 18 years. I've never sold eggs or bread or milk.
Yeah, so I'm just saying, I think that the way that this definition reads and the way that this has been grandfathered in our review of the files is a gasoline service station with a point-of-sale for vehicle type of sales. I mean, I get that, you know, sometimes you have a refrigerator with soda in it and stuff like that, but.
Okay.
And going back historically, gas stations didn't have all that stuff in the store. It was outside and vending machines. Yeah. I remember cigarette machines and soda usually.
Yeah, cigarettes were outside vending machines still.
All right, we're going to, we're going to keep this on point and wrap this up. So I think it's a good discussion. We got a lot of good information today that we're going to start to process. One of the things we do need to do is we will appoint a project lead, possibly a co-lead with this. We'll talk amongst ourselves, one of the board members. They'll reach out to, Mr. Cipri, are you going to be the point of contact? Okay, and we'll work that through with planning.
And do Mr. Chairman, just have one, just additional comment on the parking and circulation aspect of it. I know your current table has, based on the gasoline service station and the number of service bays and number of employees, currently listed as three. If it is going to be potentially up to five employees and if there is a parking demand that's going to be associated with the convenience portion, I think that has to be represented. And some of the photos in the application documents or in at least the planning board package show clearly more than 15 vehicles on the lot at a given time, parked in no parking zones that are striped, parked all, you know, stacked up as you've used the term. So I think that parking demand and how that's going to be allocated to employees, to vehicles being staged and to convenience customers needs to be articulated and shown on the plan.
Noted. No, he's. He's referring to multiple uses and the parking demand for each use being aggregated, correct?
Right, right. So 15 is actually the number. And it's actually, to the comment that was made about, is this oversized for the lot? Is the current number of cars that are routinely seen on the property because it's just the amount of cars trying to go through here being serviced is too much? And if adding the additional bays, is that then going to add more people being serviced? That's going to exacerbate this parking issue.
Well, I think there was two comments there. One is, up until just recently, until we read the town staff comments, we viewed all of the uses under the 15 spaces per the code. However, if the town is viewing C-store as a retail use, then 15 spaces would not be commensurate the two uses, right, gasoline service station and a C-store. So we'll come back and can comment on that. And I would defer to the other being an enforcement issue after, if we are afforded the opportunity to build something new that would house and place the vehicle, the inventories, as well as the inventory spaces, as well as patron spaces in the correct manner. If the operation of the business got out of hand like that, I would default to an operational or an enforcement issue at that point. I wouldn't want to say if you give us four bays, we're just going to put 30 cars. Where does that end, right? I don't, I don't want, if you follow that, right? We don't want it to stay non-conforming because we're asking for more bays. But Chairman, I heard you loud and clear. Thank you. I know it's a late evening for you all.
All right.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Two Commerce Park Site Plan Application for a Shed. Give community a minute here to exit and then we'll.
Clark, Clark. If they talk, can you shut the doors?
Okay, go ahead.
Well, that made a difference.
Don't take it personally.
Yeah, I do not, even a little. So yeah, we're looking to add.
Can you just introduce yourself?
Yeah, Robert Becker. I'm the Operations Manager with TSS Albany, Trello Books, Human Solutions, or Two Commerce Park Drive. So we are looking to add a small storage shed into our parking lot. We need to get the pallets and other wooden storage items out of our facility. They're a fire hazard. They've got to go somewheres. And we don't want to just stick them out in the parking lot, trying not to, as my boss was phrasing, who did it and ran. So we did some research into the sheds that we'd want. We can make them look very similar to the building themselves. We can tuck them in behind the dumpster enclosure that's already there and behind the trees. It will take up two parking places, the way we have it laid out. And I think that we have, we'll go from 80 to parking places to 80, based on this. So I think that covers, and right here, the picture shows pretty much the maximum usage that we have. This was during shift overlap. So basically first shift and second shift were there. The whole engineering staff was there. So we're in good shape as far as parking spots are concerned.
And just to go ahead, this is.
Oh, no, that's your max parking right there?
You got a lot of.
Yeah, and actually, this doesn't show. There's another picture. There's parking that goes down the front of the building as well.
Right, that you see from the road. I just wanted to be clear for the storage shed. The pallets are there temporarily. In other words, you're taking them out and then you're bringing them back in? Or is it en route to being disposed of?
It worked to be used.
Reused, repurposed.
We cycle through them. We, you know, we'll go through 15, 20 a month, you know.
Yeah, and they go out and then they would come back in when needed. Okay, thank you.
So we also got a, part of the application package had the package of what the shed consists of, what it looks like.
Yep.
That's always helpful. A couple items that we sometimes refer to as the Conservation Advisory Council may want to take a look at this. They may recommend putting up some vegetative screening, something like that. Anytime we can do an enhancement on the property, we always encourage that with the applicant.
Okay.
And then we do have an architectural review board. This is pretty straightforward, but sometimes they get reviewed to look at the projects. It's a non-binding recommendation. They're a great group. They're helpful. I don't know if this would warrant that, but we can talk about that with Laura and Clark. But generally, most projects, we like to show that to them so that they can give you some feedback on that as well.
Okay.
Okay. But again, it's a metal building. You have a metal building. Seems to be consistent with what's there.
We're a group of engineers. We like consistent. We like things to look like they belong.
Can still make things look really good.
One question. If things change and you needed to replace those two spaces, could you?
Uh, is there room on site? Well, yes. I mean, you can see the area in between. I mean, I suppose we could do that. There's, us, if we need two spaces, we could take it down and come up with, this isn't necessarily meant to be permanent. If we grew to the point in future where it became an issue, we could. I guess to straightforwardly answer your question, I don't think it would be easy to add those two spaces back in without going and making other changes that would probably do more harm than good.
And I'm assuming that this, that you thought about this being engineers, that you thought about the size of the shed. This will meet sort of future needs too. You don't anticipate. It's sufficient in size.
A little bit of growth. My, the initial application, I basically defined the maximum possible. I'm trying to keep it as small as possible and still account for a little bit of growth and to be unobtrusive. So the initial application was a given size or smaller and everything fit within those two spots. I ended up, I spoke with somebody here and they said, well, give us a specific dimension. So I picked one that was, it kind of filled it up, but, but yes, it does account for growth.
Thank you.
Will there be power to the shed?
No, no power, no running water.
And Laura, I believe that this was going to require a waiver for the parking just because it triggers.
You have to waive an additional three parking spaces just to be safe. I think it actually covers three parking.
Right.
Yeah.
So we have to grant you a waiver if approved for the three parking spaces?
That's why I asked.
Yeah.
So the, I measured, I measured the spaces. They're 18 feet wide. They're 18 feet long by nine feet wide. So it's an 18 by 18 square. And the shed, proposed shed is 14 by 17. So, and the way we've got this set up that would open up into open parking areas, so it wouldn't be opening into any other spots. So I don't know if we may just define our parking place as bigger than the normal, but, but the measurements I took said it would fit into two, if that makes a difference or not.
I mean, the parking demand is obviously, it's not, our code tends to be creating bigger parking lots than it needs to. So like, we are usually in favor of trying to bank parking and keep it grassed whenever possible. It's a clear example from your max parking that you don't need all of them. So we can double check, but whether it's two or three is probably almost irrelevant. Yeah.
Sorry, I just got a couple more questions.
Of course.
It's late night for all of us. How, how do those pallets get transported from the building to the shed? Is it going to be by lift or by carrying?
More than likely that we have a pallet jack. I don't know if you're familiar with.
Yeah.
We use pallet jacks. We do have fork truck that we could.
So if you can just point there, it'll be coming out like from that back loading area to?
If you, you see the awning about halfway down the length of the building there.
Yep.
Right next to that's a big overhead door.
Right.
So it'll be coming out of that. So it'll be coming out of that big overhead door, straight across into the storage area and then straight back in.
Why wouldn't you put the shed closer, like maybe against the building?
Because we were looking to keep it as unobtrusive as possible in that area because it already had the dumpster enclosure and the tree there. We could tuck it in behind it and figured that nobody would see it. Because you can't see it from hillside because it's behind our building. You can't see it from, from Commerce Park until you get down well past, you know, past the end of our parking lot there. And then you'd be kind of looking back toward, toward. So the idea was just to put it someplace that would
All right. I mean, apart from, the only reason I'm bringing it up, apart from the parking issue that it causes, right? It, it does look a little asymmetric. It's kind of like you just dropped a shed in a couple of parking spots and
Agreed.
Yeah.
I, I, I kind of, for me, I kind of liked it in the back corner where the lift is. That's where our our landlord stores is left over the, over the winter for snow removal. But having it back there with the doors pointing towards us was my first choice, but then it was a distance to walk to get down there to get them to bring them back in the middle of the winter. That it ended up being a
Yeah. Look, I can be okay with it as long as we agree that it does look a little clunky.
It is not symmetric. I'm fully, I'm fully in agreement with that.
It's okay.
Could you plant some, I don't know what your stormwater drainage system looks like, but could you plant some more trees between the ten parking and eleven parking spaces that you have labeled on that map?
Of course.
Could you plant some trees in there? Maybe it wouldn't look as asymmetric.
I mean, the part I liked about your argument was you're trying to screen it.
Yes.
From Commerce Park, which is, which it deserves to be screened.
But it looks, I mean, it would be good even just to add shade to some of those parking spaces. If you put a couple of shade trees between there, then you're going to screen it and
It's good for the environment anyway.
But right, but we'll still have to decide on whether it's two or three parking spots we're still getting.
Yeah, I mean, we determined three, but we can review it again if you guys want us to double check.
Yeah, that was
Be conservative with
I mean, regardless of the number, it would still requires a waiver, right? Two or three?
Um, yeah, yeah. Well, either, either would need, the site actually already has banked parking.
Yeah.
So any subtraction needs an additional waiver. We tend to recommend granting the three in case the shed gets bonked.
Yeah.
Sometimes.
Well, and to his point, that Doors don't open, they don't open wide enough that they would swing into an adjacent parking space. So
And the design of the shed we picked has sliding doors that shouldn't open up at all.
Yeah, and that bucket loader takes up three spaces and if that's there all year, I mean, I don't think there's any issue with, with the waiver being two spaces or three spaces, it's probably not going to be an issue.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Project lead.
Okay.
You want to be project lead, Lenley?
Yeah, I could buy there a lot.
Good.
I've never had
Yeah, you live near
Just supposed to go on the property.
Okay, so there you go.
Okay. So Ms. Gold is our project lead.
Okay.
She will reach out to you and set up an appointment. Sometimes a member of the planning department or other board members may come take a look at the site. And they do a site review, which is to see where the location is. They're going to look at visibility from the road, screening, things like that. Most of what we talked about today.
Okay.
All right.
And not to push, when should I expect? Just to when would you think you'd be calling?
Probably Wednesday.
Oh, okay, fine. I just, I don't want to get two weeks on the road and be wondering if I should call. I don't want to pass or I don't know how long these things take. I just wanted to make sure that I had the expectation in my head.
Possibly tomorrow, but probably Wednesday.
Okay.
Okay, so they'll, they'll do that offline?
Fine.
Okay.
Are we comfortable calling for a resolution?
Was it, I think what we can do is we can call for a tentative resolution at the next meeting.
Okay.
And that way perform the site review. We're going to clean up how many parking spaces it is. And then talk about what the waiver will be. And I think we've got a lot of good information out of this already with the initial proposal that'll make your next meeting one that we vote on.
Okay.
All right.
And going on site just makes it more alive and see if there are any questions that pop up.
Happy to, happy to show it off.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Before we start the next agenda item, I just wanted to note for the record that we're unable to change the video camera angle anymore because our videographer is not allowed legally to work past ten AM, ten PM. So unfortunately, like when we're looking at the screens, we're not going to be able to pan. The video shows the entire room and it'll catch all the dialogue, but it's not going to be as fancy as we sometimes are.
Okay. All right.
And that segues into thirteen fifty-six Balltown Road. This is a site plan application for a single family townhome requiring variances from the ZVA. And welcome back.
Mr. Chairman.
How are you?
I'm doing pretty good. So I see some familiar faces. And I see some folks here that I've known for quite a few years. And to be quite honest, since I was standing in front of this board two years ago, everyone has aged pretty well. And I got to give everyone credit for staying awake during this very lengthy meeting tonight. And I know that sometimes it's difficult, but God bless you all. So I'm not really going to get into a huge oration tonight.
Victor, could you just introduce yourself?
Yes.
For the record.
Victor A. Caponeira Jr. I'm with the Caponeira Law Firm. I was going to get to that in another twenty minutes, but so anyway, I represent the applicant. I've been representing the applicant since about two thousand twenty-one when this project started. And with me tonight is, we have Joe Hens and Dave Engels from Engels and Associates and Tim and Bob Miller to answer any questions. And they have been with us from the very start when this whole process started in two thousand seventeen. But anyway, to make a long story very, very short. We were here last time that got this board's recommendation to the zoning board for eighteen townhomes. We were getting very close to oral arguments in the appellate division. And we came up with a proposal that we feel is acceptable to everyone, including this board as well as the zoning board. And bottom line is it's fourteen units. And you can see the change that we've eliminated two buildings. So we went from eighteen to fourteen. What does that do? Obviously, it decreases the amount of variances substantially. When we first started this, we were over a hundred area variances. Why? For obvious reasons. It's a townhome development. I call it a cluster. And then we moved from there. Ultimately, we got to, I think, fifty-three. And now we're at thirty-six. And if you take away the fourteen side variances for the buildings you see, you're really down to twenty-two. And these are very, in my opinion, de minimis area variances. So that's it in a nutshell. It increases green space, increases the, I think, the whole concept of this development. And, you know, I could spend another twenty minutes going over, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, but I think most of you were here and went through this process before. Unless anyone has any questions, we should be able to move this along.
As I was a project lead, so I'll kick this off. We did have a meeting with the applicants a couple of weeks ago to talk about this. This is a refined plan from what we saw from that. So I think the takeaways are good. There, there are a few things that have come up since then that we want to just talk through at this point. And then we can talk about what the schedule is and then some of the long-term bigger things. So one of the items that came up is, and I'm, I'm looking at one of the old plans compared to this. So at the top of the site plan, there's a road that dead ends to
I see it.
Right there. So the issue with that is we just want to talk about what code implications that has and how that affects emergency services.
Yes, and this is why I brought the Engels Engineering Firm here. As everyone knows, it was on this board the last time we were asked to approach the adjacent property for possibility of interconnectivity. They gave us a resounding no.
Okay.
We were also asked to approach and the neighbor, the Van Antwerp Apartments. The resounding answer was no. So this is what we were given. And recall that this is a private roadway. So with that, I'm going to bring David up and you can address this.
Good evening. Dave Engels with Engels and Associates. We prepared the most recent preliminary plan that you see up on, on the screen. In terms of New York State Fire Code, the main road, which comes from, posed from Barcelona, which was an adjustment we did out to Van Franken. That would serve as the main road, which would serve as the fire, a fire lane and fire access. This is a private road. So really, the only advantage of that turnaround would be for like maintenance vehicles and this would be privately maintained, so they would just be able to back into one of the driveways. So it's really not necessary to add the increased impervious owing to the fact that would meet, it would still meet the New York State Fire Code. So.
Okay.
Lauren Clark, that sounds good to you.
Um, we're going to refer to the emergency services. I don't know the exact code. That just came up today. I talked to Joseph about it.
Yeah.
Um, I think the reason that the chairman brought it up is if a turnaround is added, we were wondering if that was going to shift the buildings and change the request of the variance. For the variances.
It could potentially impact the well, I guess it depends on the size of the turnaround. If there was one added there, if it stayed outside the thirty-foot front setback, it would not impede on the, on the, or on the setback or the variances.
Okay. One of the things that actually came up at CAC is garbage collection. So, I mean, I know I actually live near a dead end that school buses can't go down. So it's almost, it's a long road. Middle Street and the kids, even when they're kindergartners, actually have to walk all the way to the end. Not nearly as long as this, but also garbage trucks and things like, it's very hard for them. They have to send totally different vehicles. The CAC was wondering how garbage collection would work and if there's going to be a homeowners association, if it can all be collected at once because we're already having issues with multiple garbage vendors all around town. But just something to think about, like, you know, even just something as simple as garbage trucks, like it may meet the emergency code, but how are we going to get some things turned around there be a question?
Sure. We can take a look at that and report back.
Yeah, even though it's a private road, there's a likelihood of people parking in the driveways. They're single loaded driveways. The turnaround might not be available backing up and into a curve is another, is another issue that may be problematic if they have to drive in or if they can't come in and K-turn and back in. So something that just might may want to take a look at.
Laura, are you, does the town have other private roads that, because that's private just speaks to ownership, not necessarily the design of, design of the road. So the town has the dimensional requirements for dead end streets and how those are addressed. So are there other private roads in the town? Just dimensionally that this is comparable to? And I guess for the applicant, what's, how is this going to be maintained? I know it's private. So is it through an HOA? Is it through a deed restriction? Is it through a how's that going to happen? Make sure that it stays maintained?
Sure. That's some of the details we're working out with the Millers, but I'm assuming we would have a basic HO. There would be a basic HOA for maintenance purposes. Likewise, on the upper part of the page there, we have the stormwater management area. So that would have to be under some type of ownership and maintenance. So there would be an HOA that would work through maintenance of stormwater, maintenance of the private road. It's a twenty-four foot wide road. So it is plenty wide enough in terms of, you know, the internal traffic circulation. There would also be an easement over the road for the municipal utilities. We have water and sewer extensions of mains that would come off of Balltown Road. So those would be under an easement to the town in terms of ownership and maintenance of the water and sewer facilities.
Yeah, just to answer Andrew's question, we do have some we do have some sort of stubs that don't have turnarounds, but they're not really any longer than like the first building. And they do plan for snow storage at the end of them, which may, those snow storage areas may help with turnaround. When they get long though, they will usually have a turnaround with the exception, which is not a private road of Middle Street, like Middle Street, they really struggle on
Are you willing to ask WRGB again? It's been what? How many years? Seven years? Six, five years?
And you could say it's a private road, not a public, and you could even make it like one lane. I mean, it really solves your problems.
So just to Yeah, yeah, the applicant would be willing to reopen that discussion and raise that question.
Probably had said this before, Laura. I mean, the town really could say something here, right?
Oh, yeah. I don't mind helping. If you guys want to have a conversation, like I can be at that meeting with you guys.
It's, it's both private roads. Right, we're not going to be using it for
Yeah, because I, I mean, we would have to look at the code, but you might even be able to make it go down to one lane and
Yeah.
Just have it be exit only, like just things that'll make them feel a lot more comfortable. Cause I think before we were talking road entrance.
Yeah.
I think.
I recall that too. Just to confirm though, could the request be for the purpose of trash collection and emergency exit?
Yeah, I mean, I feel like we could make it like just very specific, like kind of like we did with Amador. Like that's just a little thing and we got an easement from E1 to cross their property if needed. That was it.
Yeah, we have approval, but we have a stub. We need access. I mean, I don't, I have not heard the solution for trash. I don't know how that would work.
Yeah.
I've got to, like, it sounds, I don't know how that would work.
And they just back up the whole road on Middle Street.
Yeah, they would use the road as the turnaround. So they would back up and we're assuming these would be individual trash cans. So they bring them out to the street. A lot of times they'll even bring them out for the customers if it's, you know, these smaller developments.
What I've seen, they'll probably use the driveways.
If they can, if they're not filled, but.
It's a lot of beeping.
So one of, one of the updates that's a benefit to this is that the entrance off of Balltown now aligns with Barcelona, which is good.
Yeah, good point.
But that dead end would, if it becomes problematic, would have to shift everything down. And then you'd have to loop that road back out onto Balltown again. I mean, that could be a possibility if everything's shut. You'd lose all the green space that's down at the bottom of the property on the south end. But, you know, let's see, let's see where this goes. We've got some internal questions with the, with emergency services. But that was something that was discussed at the previous plan that we just wanted that out.
Great.
Okay. So while we're talking about like access on the site, a couple of things. There is a sidewalk that has been added with some landscaping along that. It does cross, well, that doesn't show it very well. Sidewalk is
We, we've added a, there's, there's an existing one on Balltown and then we've added the multi-use path.
We're seeing, so
Yeah, we're seeing the sidewalk on the side.
Okay, so that was one of the things we talked about. So the plan that we have has the sidewalk on the south end of the road, then coming and crossing over. And now the sidewalk went up the stub road that, that ends and it is now, is now no longer there. So what is the premise for
Removing.
Removing it.
The main, I'll let Laura chime in as well, but the main purpose was to get a connection from Balltown to Van Antwerp. Hence the white multi-use walking trail. I believe that we're thinking that would probably be an asphalt trail, five feet wide. That would run along the total north edge of the main connecting road from Balltown to Van Antwerp. We are going to provide an easement to the town on the Balltown roadside of the north-south stub road. We just didn't really think there's really anywhere for that trail to go. We have stormwater on that side of the road where that trail is shown on the predecessor plan here. So would have to go on the home side.
Yeah, so this is non-current, right? This is, this is what we have in our package.
We've updated it slightly. Very, very similar.
So can we see the new one, Laura, if you don't mind?
Yeah, sorry. I didn't actually realize there was a difference. I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, we're running into our Wednesday, Friday thing again.
And you really would end up with a trail to nowhere at that point because you would end up at the WRGB again.
Yeah.
Well, it's not a trail in nowhere because it would serve the three houses there and it could be a trail to somewhere someday. Landers love trails to know where.
But the note is we, we are willing to give a ten-foot easement to the town. So if there was a need for the trail, it could be extended up, up along the, I guess, the Balltown roadside of the north-south road. I think we split the difference on that one.
Yep. I think an easement is definitely really important there.
A couple of real highlights of this plan though, is the, the large increase in green space. We're up to, to approximately an acre of true green space at this point. Versus the old plan, which had about an acre of green space, but most of that old plan, which had about an acre of green space, but most of that was stormwater. This has a separate one-acre stormwater parcel in the center, something we're looking at there, coming up with some wildflower plantings in there, preservation of some of the real forested areas toward Van Antwerp Village, which used to have a unit over there in the corner near Van Antwerp Village, so now that's all green space. Likewise, where the building came out from the south end by CVS, that's a green space parcel. We do have some stormwater that will be necessary immediately adjacent to the road, so either we can leave it on the town parcel and take an easement, or we can make the open space parcel smaller. So that's something we'll have to work through.
So that's the, is that the bio swales?
Yes, those are mandated by DEC. We, we have to do those.
Correct. And that, and you can't use that overlay with the wetlands, correct?
It would not work.
The wetlands right now are up in the, in the upper area.
That, that would be for what we're calling stormwater attenuation or, or storage. We could not do the main stormwater quality treatment in there because we'd be too low in elevation. We could never, we couldn't drain out.
Okay, where is the new location being proposed?
There's a swell that runs along the sidewalk, where you can see the street trees.
Okay.
And then likewise, there's one at the south end of the road.
So you'd capture it, bringing it towards Van Antwerp?
Can you come get the microphone?
Can you, can you grab the microphone? You won't be captured on the audio.
Especially now that they can't, like, we're not even changing the.
Okay, so there's two, two dry swales as part of this plan. This is, this is one swell here, which picks up this impervious from the road and, and this twin building here. And then likewise, there's one up here. And then all of this drains down across the road and into the, the existing culvert system that's, that goes over to CVS. Does that make sense?
I gave this comment to Joseph, but I'm concerned about the bio swales being on the open space. I think we had this conversation at the last time, like, when there's stormwater management on a parcel, it doesn't count as open space anymore. So to get to your first question, no, the town would want that to be owned, you know, by the developer, and then that's vastly reducing your open space. Joseph thought you might be able to squeeze it or do some other treatments?
It, it, we looked at it today, but only reduced it by about, what did we say, was 5,000 square feet?
Yeah, the one open space.
Yeah, so the one open space up on top, and again, again, the swell is right, here's our trail, and the swell ends right here where the street trees begin.
Yeah, but the other issue is your grading line, so I think when you do a tree clearing plan, you're going to see that when you have to do those grading lines, that you're really going into the open space and clearing them in order to install the bio swales. I really like, would recommend that you push those as far away from the open spaces as possible.
We'll try to tighten it up as much as we can, but there definitely will be a squeeze, and that will definitely be an element that is required.
Did I hear drainage going over the road?
No.
Yeah, Davey.
Oh, there's a culvert that goes underneath the road, I'm sorry.
Underneath is better, thank you.
If you, yeah, can you let, because, sorry.
No, I just wanted to add, Laura, with some of the things you're talking about, that, that a town-designated engineer has been engaged and they have been reviewing the project and have given some conceptual feedback to the town, as well as the superintendent of water, sewer, and engineering. So we're hoping, planning on having more of that even within the next day or two.
Well, maybe I can explain the stormwater requirements. So basically, the three buildings that face Van Antwerp, the stormwater, Van Antwerp obviously is higher than our, is the high point of our site, and everything grades back toward WRGB, toward our stormwater dry pond, we're calling it. So we need to pick up and treat all of the rooftops, all of the driveways and the private road, and also the multipurpose trail. So if you envision water sheeting across from Van Antwerp all the way through the development, the logical place that you have to collect it would be on the north side of the walking trail. We have no other way to do it.
Well, you could pitch the road back to the single-family homes and put the swell on that side, too.
One, I guess, typical roads in this community now, if they're not curbed with sidewalks, have the asphalt flare that comes up for the, you know, for essentially the edge of the road. So if this, this wouldn't, to be able to convey stormwater to the north to get to that, to that dry pond, you wouldn't be able to have, it would have to pitch off the road. You wouldn't be able to have that, that same design as all the rest of the roads in the town, and it would have to sheet across that multi-use path then. Which, depending on the time of year, you could be conveying water that turns to ice over the, over the, the multi-use path, so.
Well, it should, it would be a continuous slope, so it would continue to drain, just like it would drain across the road.
Yeah, so I'm sure this will come out in the, in the TDE's review, but it seems like it's overdesigned for stormwater, because there were, there were existing dwellings along Balltown, so there's a redevelopment aspect there. And if you're not taking into account disconnected rooftops to reduce your impervious for those, for all those dwelling units, that's a way to decrease, to Laura's point, having green space is green space, but having green space that's stormwater management features isn't really green space.
We are supplying, we are providing a separate open space that's green space, that's the parcel that's in the corner. So the stormwater is a dry basin, and again, that would be an opportunity where Laura would recommend planting wildflowers, which we think is a, a neat idea in terms of some diversity of, of plantings and habitat. Right now, that's just a mess. It's a, it's a wetland, but it's an invasive, has invasive species, loose strife, so there's really no trees there. So you're not losing any trees in the stormwater management area. I can provide some photos for you. There's some white pines and a little bit of mixed deciduous over toward the Van Antwerp Village apartments. That's what we're essentially protecting and preserving in that 23,758 square foot space. Yes, there's, I think the swell is five or six feet wide, so you're really not losing that much in the green area. If you want, we can put that in with the private road and then, you know, still provide the open space, it just would be slightly smaller. It's still going to look the same, it's not going to look any different.
I would like for you to look like rain gardens on the, you know, on the single-family or the townhouse dwelling lots or something, so that you can reduce the amount of bio swell that is on the open space. There should not be stormwater management practices in our open space.
So we would take it off?
Yeah, yep, that's what I talked to Joseph about today. It's an open item, and I think that that's something you really got to look at.
I mean, we're putting a ton of street trees on, we're putting in native species, the red oaks, providing the multi-use trail, I think this is a really dressed-up plan.
It's way better, but there are still things to work on.
But we do have to comply with the DEC standards, so that's, that's not something we invented or were made up. There's, there's a certain calculation for water quality volume.
That is understood, but please listen to what we're saying as well, and look at some other alternatives.
And you still will have to pick up all of the impervious area from the homes, the roadside, and the multi-use trail. And that all have to be treated on the north side of the road.
So.
Yeah, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't necessarily have to if rain gardens were incorporated at the individual, the individual rooftop leaders where they come off. Those, those could take your runoff reduction credits at the house for the disconnected rooftops instead of trying to treat it all at the dry pond through the soil. There's, there's options to do other, other treatments.
And we've been seeing that in a lot of subdivisions that have been coming for the town. We've been doing a lot of individual rain gardens on properties to catch the roof, so that that doesn't have to be treated as a one.
It's a maintenance, it's a maintenance issue, yeah.
I've been doing this for, going on 50 years. I've done hundreds of these subdivisions. And when you talk about rain gardens, how many of you have seen what rain gardens look like after five years? How many have looked at what these rain gardens look like after 10 years? You know what they are?
I have.
So have I. So have I. And they're not rain gardens anymore. Why? Because they're just not maintained. What we have here is a development that is way beyond what this board recommended two years ago, in terms of betterment. We've added items after the meeting that was had on the 31st, the walkway, the green space, the trees. So, you know, the idea of rain gardens is a great idea, but if you look at the future and you look what, what they really look like after people own these lots and they take care of them, they're just not maintained. I mean, do you understand what I'm saying?
You need to speak into the microphone, Dave.
Come on.
We, we have also had a lot of experience with rain gardens, and most communities that we work in now do not allow them, just because they've been a maintenance disaster. And they do turn into, you know, a lot of times, people will just rake them away and bulldoze them away, and they're gone. And you have to have deed restrictions on the lots. There's a lot of legal aspects, as well as the, the practical maintenance aspect.
Which still have to be for the other features, anyway. There's going to have to be maintenance, and it's either going to have to be through a deed restriction or an HOA or some type of agreement to maintain those anyway.
Yeah, but it'd be more traditional, you know, it would be more obvious that you would maintain, you know, the swell line.
Laura, some of us, some of us weren't here years ago, it might benefit, what's, if you, if there could be a recap, I guess, what stage is that? Is this still at sketch plan review?
There, they did get referred to the zoning board under sketch plan review. The zoning board meeting will be on Wednesday, and that will be putting on record the granting of the variances. And then between then and now, or, and between then and when we have our next meeting, they would have to submit the major subdivision application. It's still at sketch plan.
That hasn't been approved yet.
That hasn't been approved.
Right, okay.
Yeah, so, like, our goal would be do a sketch plan, a resolution for sketch plan approval, call for a public hearing, and do a secret determination. And I think this, this plan is miles ahead, and it's a beautiful plan. I think the thing that we're falling back on a little bit is that we didn't have the engineering before. We were still all looking at concept, and now we're throwing the engineering on there. And I think that this plan is accomplishing a lot of what we're trying to do in the town center overlay district. Open space is great, but I think that it's worth exploring other options for stormwater that don't put stormwater on the open space parcels that we just worked so hard to create. So please look.
Yeah, so I, I understand, Dave and Vic, your concern about the fact that the rain gardens may not work, but respectfully, after you get your last CO, that issue becomes our issue, not yours. So please at least show us what it would look like, see what the options are, as far as what it could do as far as freeing up some of the open space.
Victor, you have to talk into the microphone.
Look, we'd happy, we'd be happy to look at that, but I'm, I'm not really sure, like, what we're actually saving when you quantify how much of the open space is actually getting taken up by this bio swell that's, that's going around. We're not talking about a significant amount of area compared to the, to the green space that we are providing the town. Where the real green space is up in the corner here and down along CBS. Stormwater management is really a separate area. We're just talking about an area of bio swell. And to your point, Mr. Hess, it becomes our issue on a sale. It, it isn't as soon as it's gone, it's, it's our issue on a marketing standpoint. So it is something that we are concerned about. I just don't see, as far as we've gone with this plan, that making us put in these rain gardens is, is really a good thing. That's just how I feel about this.
So just, it's not making, we're asking you to look at other options that keep the stormwater off the open space.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a simple design exercise. And you may come back, like, and we've just done this with a couple of that, you may come back and we may see it and say, listen, we feel that this is the better plan. We have, I think a lot of the board members here just need to see that. And I, and I agree with all the other comments. We're, we're, we're in a very good position with this plan from where we were months and months and months ago. But this is an accelerated timeline. We want to work together on this, and I think that that's one of the open items that came up, it came up today. We, we want to work through that process, and I, and the other thing, I know Laura will never, doesn't want to hear this, I think she got way too many trees. So I would, I would either.
Laura gave us the space.
I gave him a spacing.
I, I, I would group them a little differently, probably, you know, get decent species in there, intersperse it, you know. It, it's, it's, it's not a tree-lined boulevard, it's just, it's going to be a nice walking path. Some townspeople, people on the other side will definitely utilize cutting through there because it is a safer way to get to Balltown. You know, we were talking, you know, how do you cross Van Antwerp? It's, it's a problematic intersection, but this does come with some benefits. So I, I'd like to move on to another, we have some other things we have to cover here just because we've got a lot of other things to, and we do have another applicant. So the sewer connection, the sewer connection has to be signed off by, by the city, and that water, the water line needs to be looped, and the private sewer laterals have to be adjusted to be gravity-fed. I think that was another one of the takeaways.
The plan does show gravity-fed sewer, so we're in agreement on that.
Okay, good.
And we did meet with the town engineer regarding the water, so we'll finalize that with him.
Okay, good.
So just one quick comment on the, on that topic for, for this layout. With, with the road coming through and into the stub, I mean, it seems like it's, it's primarily to give access to that, that, that one building that's internal to the site. Everything else fronts along Balltown and Van Antwerp. So is that true for the utilities also? The extension of the water and the sewer onto the property is primarily just to service that one building versus just doing service connections straight out to existing mains in the road?
I, I think we didn't want to get into the traffic interruption on Balltown, which would be a very busy road to get into any type of water services. When the houses were demoed, they actually did abandon the water services and sewer services. I think there were some questions on, on conditions as well of what those services would be. So we, we're feeling this would be a much easier from a construction or constructability standpoint to bring the water and sewer internal and then just make the, you know, single connections to the main.
But those are then going to become town utilities for maintenance in perpetuity?
Yes. And that, and that was, there was a sit-down meeting with Matt Yedo in engineering on this, so we worked on that plan together.
It's up to the town whether or not these, the town board, whether or not the utilities would be accepted or they'd be maintained privately, but I feel like that's a pretty small issue.
Just to recap, the Conservation Advisory Council had a meeting on November 6th. They made some recommendations, all of which we've talked about here, with the exception of one. They mentioned if there was any street lighting to keep that as controlled, so it doesn't promote light, light pollution, but I don't think there's any streetlights proposed anywhere on the, on the private road.
No streetlights.
So, so that's a non-issue. A limit of clearing map is going to be required for some of the areas that you're going to be taking down, some of the trees, and they also requested that anything over five-inch diameter be marked, or items indicated that would be saved. So those were the items that we had from the couple of meetings that we had from our planning sessions. I'll open it up to other board members, comments or observations?
I think it's a greatly improved plan.
Thank you.
Okay. What I'd like to do next is I'd like to recap what we've proposed for a meeting agenda and schedule. So amongst the board members here, we're going to call for a vote. We've talked about holding a special meeting on Thursday, November 21st, which is this week. We would call for a public hearing and the seeker at that special meeting. And then the other thing is that a major subdivision application has to be into the town by the 21st. I think that was related to as well.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
Okay, all right. In December, we have two scheduled planning board meetings, on the second and the 16th. The second would be the public hearing, and then on the 16th would be the conditional site plan approval if everything went well and there were any major takeaways from the public hearing. So I think all the board members were made abreast of that. They understand the issue with the upcoming wetlands and what's pending for 2025, so we thought that this would be the best path forward.
Can, can you describe that issue?
For the wetlands?
Yeah.
So I believe next year, there's going to be larger restrictions on what can be developed in proximity to the wetlands. I don't know the exact distance, but.
Potentially.
The what?
Potentially.
Potentially.
Correct.
So. So.
All right, those timelines meet with what we've been discussing, yes.
Okay, alright.
Now, um, so just to be clear here, your next meeting is, I'm just looking at the timeline here.
Our next scheduled meeting is December second. We're going to, I'm gonna propose to the board members here that we have a vote tonight to have a special meeting for this Thursday.
Okay.
One topic on the agenda.
With one topic on the agenda.
And this, ours will be the only topic.
Correct.
Will you want us present, are you gonna, okay. What time do you meet? Seven?
PM.
How about open to the uh, privilege of the floor?
No privileges.
Okay, cuz I can get a beverage truck in here.
It's a special meeting.
It's a special meeting for one agenda item.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. So I'm going to propose that we hold a special meeting on November twenty first, twenty twenty four to review site plan of thirteen fifty six Balltown Road.
I'll second.
Okay, second by Ms. Gold. Mr. Henry, could you call the roll?
Long night. Mr. LaFong.
Hi.
Ms. Strang.
Hi.
Mr. Khan.
Hi.
Ms. Polowski.
Hi.
Mr. Billen Calhoun.
Hi.
Ms. Gold.
Hi.
Chairman Darpino.
Hi. So a special meeting on the twenty first.
See you in a couple days.
Thank you for your patience tonight. Alright. Alright. Last up on discussion items is twenty four twenty Hartland Street, a lot line adjustment. Come on up.
I think it's usually referred to as being between you and lunch, but I think now it may be between you and sleep.
Someone was at that dinner too.
So I'm Stephen McIntosh. I'm, uh, I'm myself and my wife Deborah are the owners of twenty four twenty eight Hartland Street. Seeking to have that lot line adjustment with twenty four twenty nine Hartland Street. Uh, and I think now you have a map that shows uh, the proposed fifteen feet adjustment uh, into that property of twenty four twenty nine to the left. And I'm wondering what other sorts of things I could answer for you and what any next steps might be.
So we reviewed this for zoning compliance and it does not require any variances or waivers. It's compliant with the zoning code. Um, we would recommend a resolution for approval. It did come to the board one time before, which actually allowed for a lot line adjustment. There are some minor tweaks which we can get to the surveyor. For instance, there's no line for the planning board chairman to sign here. Um, just a couple real minor things um, that I think could be ready by December second.
I'm, I'm fine with the timeline. We've seen this project and it's pretty straightforward.
Okay.
Sorry for making you wait for so long to say that.
Alright, I'm having a little difficulty hearing tonight from a slight cold, so if you could just summarize that for me briefly again as to what I should do next.
Oh, um, everything's in compliance. We looked at it once before and we knew that that was gonna be the case. Um, there are just a couple little things missing which we'll send you an email about, like there's no signature lines for the chairman. So just a couple tweaks, but I'm comfortable recommending resolution for approval of the lot line adjustment.
That's very good, thank you.
Okay.
And was there anything that had to get done with the easement that extends, that will now extend onto the other property from the lot line adjustment?
The.
Utility easement number two?
We can, I can check that with Rob. I'll check that with Rob. My guess is no, but we'll just double check it.
It looked like it was shifting with the lot line adjustment. It's shifting a portion of the easement onto twenty four twenty eight. So there would have to be a new easement on twenty four twenty eight and a revised easement on twenty four twenty nine.
Which we could just put right into the deeds cuz with lot line adjustments, we do require them to file new deeds.
Right.
Yeah. Rob and I, Rob and I could work on that.
Would that be listed as a condition as well?
Um, yeah, we have been um, struggling when the lot line adjustments go to get um, filed to make sure that the deeds are correct. So I would recommend that we do put requirements for deeds on resolutions for approval.
Okay, thank you.
So just to clarify, once I receive that email that requires these adjustments, I can refer those to the surveying firm. Um, um, work with the attorney to get them on board for what they're gonna need to do for the deed and et cetera, et cetera.
And. So your surveyor, when they give you the legal description that you're gonna attach to the deed.
Right.
If those easements have to be adjusted, that will be part of that description, that meets and bounce description that they give you. So yeah, we'll give you some information that will make sense to your surveyor.
Right, and but then the multiple documents and the mylar and things will be also produced, I guess, by the uh, surveying firm.
But you will need your land attorney to write the deeds.
Yes.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll be, we'll be set with that.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Correct, yeah. Um, and if anybody wants to be a project lead on that, they can volunteer. We do not have one currently assigned. Okay, uh, that finishes up discussion items. Uh, move on to reports. First one is thirty five twenty two State Street branding change from Sunoco to a Shell station.
Um, yeah, so we did not feel like this rose to the level of needing a site plan review, but I ran it to run it past you guys in case you had any comments. Um, it's currently a Sunoco. The sign is staying exactly the same. The dimensions are exactly the same. There's a digital readout for um, the gas and diesel currently that's existing. This is proposed. Um, the color scheme, I mean, it moves from sort of a blue, yellow, red to a white, yellow, red. And then they do change from the sort of Sunoco rainbow to the Shell, white and yellow. Um, I didn't identify any concerns, but I figured I just ran it past you guys.
Laura, just to be clear, none of the operations change, right? There's a retail in there, there's a car wash.
They're literally just changing the colors on the. The employees are staying the same. The, I think the owner is even.
Yeah, there's no tenant change, no ownership change, just, just a branding change.
Yeah, but that means.
No, so I think the Sunoco, they're just changing the vendor that they're getting the gas from.
There's no facade sign.
No facade signs are changing.
Okay.
The, going from Sunoco to Shell.
She's gonna be much brighter.
A little brighter. On the, it's on the commercial highway though, so we don't have the, we don't have like the, you know.
Concerns.
And then the last one I want to show you guys, just to get your feedback on. This is the as-built for River's ledge. Um, they did swap where they installed the sidewalks. So over here, I'll start with the easier one. This was where they had proposed to put the sidewalk. This ended up being a very, very steep slope after they built the recreation center. So they changed and put the sidewalk along the road. Um, and then over here they had a loop sidewalk. And what they did was they ended up, oops, building the sidewalk on the north side. It's a little bit smaller and it starts with this building and it goes to here. Um, there is some cliff.
Crossing on the, on the roadway?
There's not a painted crosswalk where you're entering into those things. Um, oops, I don't know what that is. But, um, oh, you guys can't see that. There is, I would say, some topographic issues with putting a sidewalk here. There's like a cliff that's coming almost directly to the road. So I understand why the, the sidewalk isn't here. Um, you know, this side of the road does pick up the majority of this area here. Um, I think it would be hard to do a section of sidewalk here because you're again running into the grade with the buffer here. But you do lose from here to their connection because they didn't build it that way. Um, I reviewed it. I told them I would bring it to you guys. Um.
So they didn't contact you before they built it?
They did not, no. Um, they actually wanted to submit the as-built just like this. I told them that they were missing the sidewalk and then they built it on the other side of the road.
So our procedure here is to.
I can require them come back to Santa, to planning board for site plan approval. If you guys think that the sidewalks are relatively equivalent, I can just move them on to the senior center building too.
Of course, this is you and me, buddy. We gotta make a recommendation.
I've been out there. They, they are, they are relatively, and I think the ledge was a concern on the north side originally anyhow.
It's not my absolute favorite. I think they're relatively equivalent and the site is beautiful.
I mean, there were some limitations, I think, on the proposed, so.
The outcroppings were a little, or the, yeah, the elevation was.
Yeah, and Clerk and I were on site for about two or three hours. People variously walk on the sidewalk and it's so common there. They variously just walk on this, right through the middle of the street.
Yep.
I can appreciate that it's, it's relatively the same and if, if everyone is okay with it, that's fine. But I absolutely, drives me crazy when it's, I can't build it now and ask for an apology. Forgiveness, yep.
Me too, absolutely. I say this to Clerk all the time. Why couldn't you just follow the plan?
Yeah, or at least, you know, before you do something different.
Yeah, because, well, yeah, because I actually think they couldn't put it, they can't put it here. But I wish they could figure that out before they draw it there.
So I'm, one voice added to colleagues on it. I'm okay with having them just accepting what they built and move on.
I think I already said that, yeah.
Yeah, so it's the rest of the board. I don't know if we need to vote on it or.
I think we should.
Yeah.
Alright, then we'll, we'll move forward and we're still working with them on the senior center. More to come.
It's, it's a motion to accept the as-built.
Um, not really. I just wanted to know if you guys wanted to, me to drag them back here or not. I'm always happy to do that.
Oh, oh, no, 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 no. I don't think that's, I don't think that's, I think there's a, is there a general consensus that this is acceptable? Alright, then we can let planning handle it from here.
Yep.
Yeah.
I mean, we are interested in the senior building.
Yeah, no, they were. Yeah, it's their senior building.
The one they.
Building, yeah.
The new building that's.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's there. It's the apartment building.
Correct.
It's age restricted, it's age restricted.
And, and if you haven't been by, that's going up very quickly. It, it looks really nice, the senior center building.
For the record, that roof line is exactly what I expected it was going to be.
Yeah.
So I am going to be adamant on the next project that we see better renderings because that's exactly what we didn't want to see.
Exactly what we didn't.
Didn't, well, what it did was there, that they, there are gable slopes that go up and then they drop straight back. And I knew that they weren't, the way the rendering showed them, they showed gables coming together and I knew from the fl, the plans, that's not what was going to happen, so.
So we do, we had that documented to be in better renderings.
So I think on a, on a major project like that in the future, they have the ability to do that. They did, they did the design. It's a matter of using that software correctly and showing it from different vantage points. Um, but still go down and take a look at the site. It is, it is progressing very well.
All their townhomes are full.
If I was on there, he said they are a hundred percent.
Yeah.
I said when they lose someone, they already have somebody.
Yeah.
They're on to the next hundred and sixty four million dollar project.
Yeah. Where's that one?
I think it's uh, Sartor County.
Okay. Yeah, I've, I mean, I know we're still in public meetings, I'll say it, but I gotten folks give me feedback that, you know, it's not terrible, but it's not stellar either, so.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, alright.
Moving on to commission business. Does anyone have any commission business?
I'm just briefly on ten forty five Palmer. So Miss Griffin, actually, she like, you know, like habit texts me on every planning board meeting day and I try to, I'm usually not as timely as she is. Anyway, she said that their surveyor might have left a message. Herman Poulter, so, you know, just check that. Please, thank you.
Can I just ask, since I wasn't here a couple of years ago for the, um, what Mr. Capener was here for, that, that development? Is there um, a video that I can go back and watch or I would just like to, I understand we're on to a new plan, but I would like to know where it came from.
And I think in the package, Laura, you had actually put in, Laura put in the whole.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, so there were actually two things.
Correct.
Oh.
Going back to like.
It was a mixed use on Balltown.
Okay.
With an apartment building behind on Van Antwerp.
I actually didn't put the mixed use in the.
No, not, not the, not the plans, but that was the first iteration that, that we saw then.
Yeah.
It came back. They decided to go with townhomes. Um, they did the exercise of the single family home layout on there, came back with the townhomes. It was a good working session and then went to ZBA and.
We, we have recommended.
We made the recommendation with the townhomes, correct.
So, yeah, the townhomes are better than mixed use.
That's what I was gonna say, but.
For whatever it's worth.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
The system seems to work because this plan actually is probably the best of all the ones we've seen.
Kind of where our numbers were around that fourteen.
That's right, yeah. It could have, I remember distinctly that we could have, yeah, anyway, the past is the past, but yeah, it, some of them is in there and I'm, I guess there's a video.
Yeah, I think just the hard thing now is to get the engineering to a point where we know it's feasible and we conceptually are happy with where it's going and how it's gonna work. We can like finalize the details, but like that chunk engineering, I think that's just the uh, sort of rub that we're having right now.
And the other thing that that plan does is that it makes those townhomes, each facade has to be detailed because each facade faces some sort of public road. And we had that conversation with them about diversity in design and what those elevations were gonna look like. They can't be just blank facades. And, and they, they said they would work on that. That'll be something that we'll get into down the road and then the architectural review board will probably be weighing on that as well.
And Nancy, we can get you the dates of those meetings. I think, I think the first one was in twenty seventeen.
I didn't see them, but okay.
And I just was surprised that, cuz at first, when I first read it through, cuz I'm new too, I thought, oh, crush of traffic. But the idea that they could put a ton of single family homes in and the fact that this is sort of a gradual, and then talking to you about it, there are those similar townhomes across the street. When you realize what they could do, this does seem like a very good conclusion to come to.
Laura, was there a discussion of what this is gonna be called and if there'll be a monument sign?
Doesn't have a name yet.
Okay.
No. And like, um, it is a special meeting, but I mean, I definitely asked the applicants to come. We can work through, like, I don't know if we wanna reverse it. We could almost do discussion and then the resolution so that we can just have a little more meat on it. I mean, we can just reverse the way that we normally do the agenda if you guys wanted.
Yep, for whatever it's worth, and again, I know we're still public, but um, for all the time that's passed, inflation, building, COVID and all the legal steps that took place, I'm actually slightly amazed that this is still profitable for them.
I think townhomes are just, my understanding is that those, they never make it to the market. They actually never make it.
Yeah.
I mean, especially in our market.
Yep.
Yeah, it didn't used to be that way.
But in this, in this unit, we didn't have it.
Yeah, but it didn't, I mean, it was, they were, I remember a time when it was, many years ago, it was tough to unload one.
A townhouse?
Yeah.
Because of maybe what they were.
Yeah.
But this is already, so Joel has already sold every single one of his townhouses.
Yep.
Awesome.
Yep.
Yeah, Joel's last maintenance.
Yep. Cost, maintenance, yep.
Well, this is like, this is in the walkable town center overlay district, so.
Okay.
That would be really good for people who wanna abandon driving long distances.
Yep, that's the key right now.
And that's why I'm struggling with the road. It's supposed to be walkable. Come through the road for that one interior line.
Oh, the, the one that goes north, south?
Yeah, well, even, even having that connection through, like you think about Keltz Farm, how there's the walking path goes through, but not the road. That's what I'm struggling with. You wanted to see it go to W R G B or? No, I'm struggling with why the, how this campus runs along Balltown and, and.
Van Antwerp.
Have like a horseshoes, you know. And they have that one.
Yeah, that's what you're saying. Basically, the internal road serves the one that's on the inside of the loop.
The internal road, sewer extension, the watering extension, all of those are the one interior building which they probably could squeeze in along the.
Interesting. It's interesting.
Yeah.
Could they squeeze it in without an additional variance?
Well, it creates two, it creates two curb cuts on both roads, which.
Which had four, five, four.
Correct. Balltown had.
Yeah.
Four.
Right.
Yeah.
And Van Antwerp had.
Two. And.
I think traffic is gonna work itself out because townhouses are less, less than single families, supposed to be walkable, so people might not get to drive up anywhere. So I think traffic's gonna be a non-issue. Or that impervious surface of the traffic.
Yeah, the cut here is gonna be more.
Just as a side note, and we can maybe talk about this Thursday, but there is also porous pavement that could maybe be suggested.
Um, porous pavement does really not work in this unit cuz it needs to have soils that drain underneath it, which we do not have.
We don't have it, okay.
Yeah.
It's a maintenance nightmare.
That's why our drainage ponds are so big.
I second.
Alright, if there's no. there's no further commission business.
I had made a motion.
Okay, oh, you did? Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Conde, okay. Uh, second by Ms. Gold. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, meeting is adjourned at 11:11 PM. Thank you, everyone.
Whoever, uh,
For all your
Whoever, several meetings ago, when we had those little half an hour meetings, uh,